Welcome to Grahamville County Board of Commissioners, Monday, November 6, 2023, meeting. We'd like to now recall the meeting to order, and Commissioner Zolotis-Jay over invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Would you bow with me, please? Once more again, our heavenly Father, we come to bow to say thank you. Lord, thank you, Father, for allowing us to be able to meet and do the businesses of this county. Bless each and every one under the sound of my voice, Lord. Bless them, Lord, and bless us individually, bless us collectively, Father. Lord, bless the ones that were struck and with fire this day today in Grahamville County. Lord, we just thank you that it was that no one was hurt, Lord. Lord, we just thank you for the many blessings you have stored upon us. Bless the ones in Walton County, Lord. Bless the ones that don't even have a place to lay their heads, Lord. Lord, continue to bless us and guide us, Lord, as we go through this meeting, that we make the right decision for the peoples in Grahamville County and be pleasing in your sight, Lord. Go with us and stand by us and take care of us. These blessings, all blessings, we will act in thy name. Amen.
Would you stand with me?
Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could, for a moment, we'd like to take a moment of silence for its great sadness that I'm sharing the news that Mr. James Land passed away. He's retired fire chief of the Currents Volunteer Fire Department, the brother of one of our fire chiefs, Robert Land. If you would, he passed away just the other day, and if you would, just bow your head, if you'd like, in a moment of silence in respect to him. Now, if I could, before we get into the agenda, I'd like to introduce to you the 2023-24 Leadership Grahamville class. For the audience, I'm going to read something to you that they've already heard but that you're unaware of. Each year, the Leadership Grahamville class attends commissioners' meetings to learn firsthand about the governance of the county. The class met informally with the board prior to this meeting. On Tuesday, November 14th, the class will participate in a tour of the animal shelter, the 911 Center, the Law Enforcement Center, and Detention Center, and participate in a roundtable discussion with department managers regarding county operations. If you would now, please stand and be recognized. Thank you. So, any citizen has an opportunity to join Leadership Grahamville. Each year, it's a 12-week, Deborah, 12-week, nine-week class, nine-month class, excuse me, yeah, week.
You guys thought you were only concerned about you.
And you go through various industries that affect not only Grahamville County but globally. We have many international companies here located in Grahamville County. You look at county government, and you have an opportunity to see the inner workings, you know, from Bailey Farms, biggest pepper to brew sure east of the Mississippi, to the Grahamville Compactor, which is Grahamville Brown for the tobacco industry, which is a worldwide corporation as well, and then back down into Grahamville County government with animal control and ranch operations, and you run the gamut. Ace Hardware is on the tour as well. You didn't want to skip them. One of the oldest, I think they've got a double-digit store registration number, one of the oldest Ace Hardware stores.
The oldest in North Carolina.
The oldest in North Carolina. Thanks for the prompts from Commissioner Willford here to my right. But amazing little place we call home here in Grahamville County. So if you're interested in learning more about Grahamville County, please reach out to our clerk, and she will give you all the information that you need to know about Grahamville County government. And I want to give a special shout-out to not only our clerk to the board, Deborah Weary, but Mrs. Annette Myers and Ms. Rosalyn Green, who are facilitators for that program, former class participants, and now they are the captains of the ship, so to speak. And I know that a few of the members on this board, prior to becoming board members or while they were board members, participated in Leadership Grahamville. So it is a fantastic opportunity, and if you wish to partake, please reach out to the clerk to the board, and she will give you all the information you need to know. Thank you, Commissioner Karen. Before we get into consent agenda, I also would like to take the opportunity to thank the Oxford Fire Department and the number of volunteer fire departments today that responded to a very serious downtown fire today in Oxford. And thankful to their rapid response and the work, they were able to limit the damage to downtown Oxford. So for those members in our community that are volunteer firefighters and those professional firefighters and full-time fires for Oxford Fire Department, this board thanks you, and this county thanks you, and I'm sure the city of Oxford thanks you as well. So with that being said, board members, page 31 of our minutes, there's a small adjustment for the clerk to make on District 6 to 7, halfway down on the page. Madam Clerk, you're aware of that, if we can make that change, and identifies Commissioner Gooch, it's actually District 7 Commissioner and not District 6 Commissioner, if that can be changed. And at that time, with that change, I need a pleasure of the board as to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve, Ms. Henman, seconded by Mr. Jay. Any discussion? Willford, thank you. Any other? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on now to our next phase. To hear propose of, to hear an update on carts. And Director Randy Kanter, Executive Director, will provide an update.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Jay for helping this opportunity happen and giving me an opportunity to introduce myself to you all. The second thing is, I'd like to also thank you as a group, commissioners, for your support to carts. I'm coming in on the tail end of some not-so-good things happening, and with your support, you've continued it and kept it going long enough for me to get in the seat and see if I can't get it fixed. So I want to appreciate, I do appreciate you doing that. I'd also like to thank Drew. Drew and I have met, and we're on the same page when it comes to transportation, and Drew's willing to work with me and vice versa. We've had some good conversations. I plan on continuing that relationship. A little bit about myself, I am, I have over 30 years of experience in public transportation. Started in Orlando, Florida at Lynx. I moved to Cherokee County, North Carolina. I operated that system for several years. I moved to Carteret County, North Carolina, Morehead City. I operated that system for a little over 10 years. Both of those systems, and I'm not saying I can do it here, but both of those systems did not cost the county a dime. I was able to find the funding and make them operate efficiently enough to where we survived on our own income. I'm going to give you a little bit of service statistics about carts for this past year, 2023. As you know, we closed the books on it. We had over 137,000 trips total. We did over 1,787 miles, 1,000 miles. We were, we had over 110,000 hours on the road, moving people. Of those, 39,000 of those trips originated in this county. That's a lot of trips. The Oxford Loop and the Medicaid, or not Medicaid, sorry, the, is it? Services, they equated to over 10,000 trips, just on that one route. So that's, that's very good. Our operating costs or admin costs for last year were $1,100,000. Our operating costs were $3 million. That was for the whole year. I believe we can do a lot more for a lot less, and that's where I'm striving to move the system to. Since I started in July 1st, I have found significant savings in several of the different pieces of technology that we use, to the tune of over $40,000 a year. We will be saving between Verizon and our Angel Trax, which is the camera system that's on the buses. We were also in arrears with DSS Medicaid claims, all the way back, a couple of the counties, not yours, all the way back to October of last year, there began to have a problem with the NC Trax system and billing it. Since I came onboard, I was able to reach out to some friends of mine that I know in DHHS in the state, and they were able to figure out what the problem was and why we were experiencing it. They've corrected it, and this alone, since July till now, we've acquired almost $200,000, and there's another $100,000 that we'll be getting also. So that's 300,000 total, just catching us up to what is currently owed. So we've been successful at that as well. I'm moving forward with new data support that'll give the system, that'll give the staff greater abilities. Right now, we're very limited on our computers, what we can do calendar-wise. I can't even get my calendar on the phone, that kind of thing, can't keep track. So we're moving forward with a new system, both computers and phones, at no additional cost. I'm also in the process of reevaluating the property and liability insurance, as you all are probably with NCACC as your insurer, we are too, but I just feel like there might be an opportunity to be a large cost savings there as well. So I'm going to move forward with trying to get some quotes and see what we can do or we can save on that. Maintenance improvements, since I've been there, we've acquired equipment and had our technicians certified in different areas. Other than a major mechanical failure, we can service every aspect of our vehicles now in our garage. And by the end of this week, I'm expecting to have, I'll say qualified or approved to be our own inspection station. So we'll then inspect our own vehicles instead of that cost. That'll be a huge cost savings as well. This next year, I've also requested funds for equipment from the state and Capitol, an alignment tool for the vehicles, transmission flush, brake plate. All of these pieces of equipment will then further reduce everything that we have to go out for, outsource for. We will do every single thing in-house, as far as maintenance of the vehicles. Some upcoming changes to make you aware of. We have been approved, and the Carts Board approved, a microtransit grant that we were offered. I have since found out through Itchry, who works with the NCDOT, that the funding has been approved for scheduling technology and computers, software, and they're actually offering us operating funds as well. It's almost $800,000 for the computers and technology side. We won't spend that much money, but I'll get to that in a moment. But on the operating funds, it's $150,000 we can operate this microtransit project. So we're going to start with the city of Henderson, because that's where they tell us we have to start with it. But if we can make it work there, then we can move it out to other areas. And if you're curious about microtransit, what is microtransit? Think of it as like Uber. So our clients will have, they can have an app on their phone, and they can request a trip, and it'll be automatically relayed to the driver, and the driver can go and pick them up. So it's a big step forward. With that technology, right now, our current scheduling software, which we've learned won't do a whole lot, it's costing us about $85,000 a year. There's a one-time fee and then a monthly fee to keep it going. This is normal for the business. This isn't out of the ordinary. But that technology grant will pay for that for the next three years. So we will literally see an 85-plus thousand-dollar savings each year for the next three years. I'll be moving forward with that. For an update for '25, I'm also exploring biofuels. In Carteret County, all of my fleet had been converted to propane, dual-fuel. They still burn gasoline, but if they had propane, they would burn propane. I also was lucky enough to receive a grant to have a fueling station put in at no cost to the system. The last time I can tell you when I was there, when we got a drop for propane, it was 93 cents a gallon. And I know everybody here is paying 350. I know that's what we're paying. So this past year, we spent $650,000 in fuel. I would like to, over the next two years, cut that in half. That's my goal. I'm going to continue, I work with scheduling and dispatching, trying to give them new ideas, new ways to get people scheduled, get them on groups, get more people on the bus at one time, get them moved, save fuel, save hours. And we're going to continue working with overtime. I want to eliminate all overtime for the drivers and part-time employees exceeding 30 hours. I've also began conversations with contracted providers, such as dialysis units. I have visited them, and we're attempting to move their clients, trying to get their clients over time, in with what, carts, when we're open. So if we're open from 6:00 to 6:00, if we're moving your people, we need them to be where we service the community. Right now, I have one driver that gets up at 2:00, 2:30 in the morning to have somebody there by 4:30 in the morning. I don't know, that's before me, that would not have happened on my shift. So, but I just feel like, in my personal opinion, you have a for-profit corporation riding on the backs of grants, public tax dollars for transportation. So I think if they work with us, we can work with them, and everybody's been receptive. I'm not saying that they haven't been. We can take and rein in a lot of this overtime. All right, any questions for me? That's a lot to digest in a short period of time.
Commissioner Karen. Randy, if you would, please, folks might not know what the Carteret area transportation is, but if a person in Grahamville County who is an elderly or disabled person needs a ride to a doctor's appointment or some other appointment of some, how would they get up with you? If you can give that a telephone number or an email address or a web address, that would be outstanding.
Yes, so the web address is cartin, it's info, I-N-F-O dot cartnc dot com. And the main number that they call in, and you're going to have to forgive me, because I have my personal number here. 438-2573.
Is that 919?
No, sir, that's 252, I'm sorry.
So it's 252?
That's correct.
And that is for a disabled or elderly person who needs a ride to their doctor's appointment, they can organize anybody.
Anybody.
And there are a sliding fee for those who can either afford or ill-afford.
Yes.
All the way from zero to whatever it costs.
So within the city limits, it's $4? Zero to 10 miles is $4? I could break all this down. Would you like me to send you all that?
I have the information, I'm kind of getting in the audience here so that we can, I ask questions sometimes, not so much for my own information, but then for those in the audience.
I can appreciate that.
If a disabled person or an elderly person or anybody needs a transportation to a doctor's appointment or a scheduled appointment, they can reach out to your office and schedule that.
Absolutely.
Yes, and I just wanted to make sure that we, folks have the opportunity to know that the Capital Area Metropolitan, Carts is available, it's a Carteret, Grahamville, Franklin, Warren.
Vance.
Vance, counties.
Yep, four counties.
Can utilize the cart system. Thank you.
Quick question. Just want to add on to that, we have, I think it's a lady that lives in Oxford, that works at their post office in Creedmoor. She doesn't drive, but she uses cart service every day. And I can't tell you how many people that works at Revlon use cart service every day.
And we have a lot of, a lot of students going to Vance Graham, a lot of students.
Mr. Willford.
Just a quick question, Randy. If you're going to cut the overtime back, will you have to hire some new people?
In my personal opinion, in my professional experience, no. I believe we have enough people to do what we do. We just need to become more proficient at it.
More efficient?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Henman.
What took you so long to get here?
I'm sorry?
What took you so long to get here?
I don't know.
We are so thrilled to have you onboard. This is sounding amazing to me, so thank you, thank you for what you're doing and making our jobs easier when it comes to carts. Thank you.
I appreciate that, I really do. I could say, I could say he brought me here. I needed a challenge. When Carteret County, after being there for 10 years, things were boring, I needed something to do, so.
Well, I'm going to give you something here in a second.
Thank you, Mr. Henman. Thank you for coming to the rescue. More with less, and very excited. I've heard about your leadership already.
Oh, thank you.
Wish you all the best, and thank you for all the new ideas on helping to, help us be more efficient.
Thank you. Yeah, I enjoy what I do for a living. I guess that's why I've done it for as long as I have, but, you know, not too many people can go home every evening and know that they've helped 1,000 people get to where they're going.
Well, I do appreciate what you do, Mr. Kanter, but I do have a couple of questions first, if you don't mind. I know that Oxford has a pre-designated route because they are able to get funding for that. And I made an inquiry as a county manager to you and some others, we've not yet received any information back yet, but what can we do to have more, because of the population of Creedmoor and Butner is not 10,000 per city, we're not eligible for that. What can you do to increase services in the southern end of the county?
I'd like to say that we could just, you know, create a route and run it, but right now, my biggest frustration or difficulty right now is hiring good people. The ones that I do have, trying to get their thought processes changed to be more efficient. If we had the staff, we have the vehicles, we could do it.
Well, that's the challenge that I posed to you, because the folks in the southern end of the county, really, they have a population of about 5,000 in Creedmoor, Creedmoor proper, and then, what, 9,000 Butner proper, and then the surrounding areas is much greater, and on out to the rural parts of the county, unincorporated areas. And it is an area that needs, we would really appreciate if it received more services from carts. And I know that Mr. Cummings has sent out some information, and we were going to get something back, working with them in Campo, to see how we could coordinate between the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization and even the Carteret RPOs, to be able to do that. And that's my challenge to you, is that hopefully that you can, understanding that you have financial constraints, but if you have the vehicles, then I'm hoping that you can expand those services. We have a lot of elderly and a lot of folks, we have a senior center there in Creedmoor, and we have a significant population of elderly in that area. So anything you can do, that's my challenge for you, and hopefully next time you come to us, you can provide us with an update.
I appreciate that, and I can appreciate the need for the service. And Drew and I, in one of our conversations, he had mentioned that area needing extra service.
So hopefully, maybe you can come back in a couple of months and give me an update?
I absolutely could.
Okay, that'd be great. And I know that, I know that funding is always difficult, but I think we can crack that if we are innovative in how we go about the grant process.
Absolutely.
Because bifurcating Creedmoor and Butner, and then taking Oxford as a whole, understanding the geography of the county, your population, have a significant population center in that area that is underserved in that regard. So, thank you.
And you have to, when it comes to transportation like this, you have to look outside the box. Don't go to DOT and beat up on them all the time, or go to the feds, you go around. The Department of Safety of North Carolina received a $250,000 grant, the pumping infrastructure for the propane system in Carteret County, they got it absolutely free. But it just takes time going out there and trying to find these grants and get the monies. But yes, it's possible.
And I will say, on behalf of Grahamville County, we, I think I'm correct, county manager, we still have advertised, but we do have a grant writer position advertised at this time.
That's correct.
And so anything you can push that way, again, we're hoping to have that along with partnering with the city of Creedmoor, too, so we can facilitate grants more expeditiously. But we're working to get those things resolved, but your efforts would help tremendously, I think it could be a huge benefit to Grahamville County as a whole, so thank you.
I appreciate you bringing it to my attention.
But before he leave, we've been looking at, we've been at Carts, been looking at, because we've been having, they like the roundabout shelter, go around in Oxford. Vance got the roundabout shelter in Vance County, but it's paid through the commissioners. We have been asked to look at one in Lewisburg and Warren County, and in Creedmoor and Butner area. The one reason why we got one in Oxford is we got that.
It was a 5310 grant.
5310 grant?
Yep.
That does the roundabout shelter, and that's the only one that is a grant-operated.
Right, and I appreciate that grant because of what it does, but it's one of the key factors based on population, and it won't allow us to combine the population center from both Grant, from Butner and Creedmoor together, to which I really think that if we gotten the weeds with them on that, we could accomplish that. And that's, that's, that's part of my request, the opportunity to sit down with you and Drew, and in your future, that's part of how we skin that cat.
Yes, it's very difficult when you start maneuvering between urban and rural. They like their money kept separate.
Yep.
They don't like to share. Yes, you're right.
Thank you, Mr. Jay. Thank you, sir. Is there any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to see us.
No, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the, good luck, right? We'll keep it going as far as we can.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for Ms. Purrier to come forward, if she could. Is she here?
She is.
And if she could provide us introductions to the Grahamville County Youth Leadership Council, and whatever you'd like to say, ma'am.
Whatever I'd like to say?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm going to invite the Youth Leadership Council up to talk about their annual report for the 2022-23 year.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Could you, before they come up with you, for our audience that's not familiar with this group, could you explain the origin and their purpose?
Okay, so the Grahamville County Youth Leadership Council came out of a conversation last year, I think it was last August, where we had one of the four H's, which was Jermaine Pryor at the time, come up and talk about having youth voice in the community. And from that, they talked about creating a council, which would work directly with the Board of Commissioners and also with the committees in the community. And so this Youth Leadership Board, their purpose is to be a voice for the youth in the community, to serve on the different boards, to bring back that information, and to also see whether there are other needs in the community for them to serve. And so over the years, they have done multiple things, done needs assessments and things to look and see what the, what the need is in the community, and to kind of represent every youth. And so they're from every district in the county.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. And I do believe they have a PowerPoint.
My name is Jermaine Pryor Jr. I am the chairman of the Grahamville County Youth Leadership Council, and what my vice chair, Ms. Ely, is passing out is the annual report for our 2022-2023 year so far. So over the past year, we have done multiple things in the community, such as a student needs survey, culture fest, teen mental health training, and civic leadership training. One of the most recent things we did was a student needs assessment, which was a way, we went into schools and we got sort of statistics, what students want. which was a way, we went into schools and we got sort of statistics, what students wanted to see in their community, what did they, what they wanted to talk about, and what they feel was needed in Granville County. So some of the most major things that students felt like they needed in the Grim County slash Granville County Public Schools area is more diversity, more mental health counselors, leadership events to help students get, sort of figure out where they want to go after high school. So if they want to go to military, trade school, a four-year college, and they will also like to see more student-led events. One of the next things we did was a culture fest. So culture fest is a big event in Granville County, as many of you know. And we set up a booth there to sort of promote teen mental health and mental health in general, because we felt like a lot of people did not understand what mental health is related to teens and for adults. So we had a little, we had little fun games for kids to play and for adults to play. We had a little spin wheel that you got a question, and if you answered it right, you can get a piece of candy, sort of an interactive way for people to also have fun but also learn. And we, as you can see in one of the pictures, one of our commissioners showed out and played a game with us.
Good evening. I served on the Library Board of Trustees as one of the liaisons for the group. Um, the library board helps provide the community with different resources to be able to gain knowledge. Uh, they also have different programs for teens such as Game On, STEAM, Teen Time, and also programs for adults and children. Uh, they have different volunteer opportunities. You can earn volunteer hours for a school such as National Honor Society. Uh, they also have Battle of the Books Club, uh, which helps kids read outside of school. Uh, they also have this donation fridge. It's based on a give something, take something system. Uh, they're set up at different branches of the community for people to get resources. Uh, they also offer homework and testing help. The academic help helps students be able to perform better at school. What we learned was there are accessible resources for teens to use in the library system and programs that will help teens and children outside of school. Thank you.
Can you tell us who you are?
My name is Cassie Pugh.
And what, and what district are you, what district are you representing?
District seven.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay. I'm Ayesha Landis. I'm District Four. Uh, I go to, currently go to school at Falls Academy. I'm in tenth grade. I have the honor of presenting the JCPC, which is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. I've been serving on the board for a little while. It's been great, honestly. So, um, on the council, the goal is to decrease violence and promote safety in the Granville County, um, area and to keep us safe for teens. So we talk about rehabilitation and redirection programs for teens, um, for troubled youth. So you have Shepherd Youth, um, Ranch, which, uh, uses horse therapy to help kids who maybe not are, don't have the best, um, behavior. And so we redirect them and rehabilitate them. And we learned in the end to doubt of Granville County. So we learned about the function of SROs, the county programs, uh, programs at the YMCA that also help to rehabilitate youth. And also just to keep them out of harm's way and put them into fun programs. So JCPC, um, we appreciated the work behind the county. It was a really good experience. Uh, during the council, we learn and we listen, and then we go and spread awareness about what we learned. So we use social media, um, outlet as a way to spread what we learned inside the council to teens outside the council. And then we also discussed info, info in council meetings and what we would like to see from, um, the JCPC. So we are the, um, we speak up and out and we are the youth mind of the youth of Granville County. And we speak about their experiences and how we can better that. So we, one thing that we discuss is SRO involvement. So SROs, um, they serve our schools, our police officers that are based in schools. So some have elementary, some are elementary schools. We see a lot in high schools. So we would like to see SROs, um, more involvement with teens that aren't on daunting or intimidating levels. So in the pictures, you can see that many of the SROs interacting with young kids of elementary levels. We would like to see that kind of interaction with older teens so that it be, so it's more inclusive and it's not as daunting or intimidating teens. And we believe that more domesticated and SRO teens, events and interactions will lead to better relationships, more respect in a safer county. So, um, a lot of the things that we see in JCPC, we talk about drug usage in the council. We also saw that that was a problem that teens felt was a problem in the county. So researching, we see that rehabilitation redirection program are better for, um, rather than punishment. So we talk about experiences at different schools and how we would like to see more rehabilitation programs instead of just sending a kid to, um, uh, ISS or something like that. So, um, the graphic up there is from a study that said treatment, non-incarceration. It can apply to high school though, even though that is about jail. So we also see more targeted campaigning and awareness. So we have the Don't Bullying campaigns. We, in the No Drug campaigns, we would like to see them more targeted towards youth so that we are getting more involvement from the youth. And so that it's more fun entertaining and it reaches the youth more instead of us just listening and instead of interacting. So that's JCPC. My experience has been great and I'm pleasure to, um, keep serving on the council.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Washington Pearson. I am the social media manager of the GCYLC and I am a senior at Granville Early College High School. Um, for the Veterans Affairs Committee and the Human Relations Committee, I can say that both of these committees, um, really valued our opinion. And I know the Veterans Affairs Committee, they hosted a Veterans Affair open to the community in which one of our, uh, members went. And then for the Human Relations Committee, they really just helped the community and listened to our voice, valued our opinion. And, um, in all aspects of all the community life. And then they, they were building a bridge, um, between the commissioners, the teens, and the people of our community.
Hi, y'all. My name is Elena Ely. I'm a junior at South Granville High School and I'm also vice chair of this council. So we also had a Parks, Greenways, and Recreation Focus Group where some of the things we discussed was activities for teens to do, how the county can improve our parks and our recreational centers, um, what we would like to see more put in the county, kind of what we did with the Creedmoor Community Center, placing more of that in other local communities, not just in one district. Um, as well as ways to improve public transportation, so that students will be able to participate in more community activities.
Um, hi, my name is Ajab Duhahak. Um, I am currently a graduate from Granville Academy. I live in District Five. And today I am presenting on the need of public transportation or transportation for teens across the county. Unfortunately.
Here you go.
Unfortunately, I did not get a chance to serve on the cart sport this year, but I can speak from personal experience as a teen across the county that has not had, um, transportation or easy time with transportation. And I think it could use some improvement. So currently teens without cars or a ride in this county don't have a consistent way to get to the work sites, participate in extracurricular activities, or out-of-school organizations, and I would know that. Here in Granville Ca, Granville County, there's only one way or mode of public transportation, which would be carts. And although it is public transportation for everybody, um, across the counties, it is like kind of directed towards the senior population in Oxford. So I did have, like, it was a good experience when I was taking that, um, as a mode of transportation to work over the summer, but there were some times where I did have like a couple of issues. And I think a solution to fix that for the kids or other teens that might need to use that to get to the different things that they have going on would be run a route dedicated to teens across the county for that, specifically working after hours. I do know that the, um, running hours are like maybe five to six, the operating hours. And I think that if we extend that potentially, that teens across the county would have a way to get back from their work sites after they finish, um, doing that. And I believe that if we implement, uh, a, a exclusive route for teenagers across the county that, um, need transportation to things like extracurricular activities and their work sites, and maybe possibly extend hours, operating hours, that would fix the, um, transportation for teens across the county.
Where did you, excuse me, where did you work?
Um, I was a summer intern. Um, I think it was the GROW internship over the summer for the, um, school, the public school system.
Okay, thank you. Um, hey, how you doing?
Hi.
Thank you for what you're doing. Um, did you talk to anyone in the, the public school systems about, uh, school transportation after school hours?
Um, no, I haven't.
That might be, that's one place, but you, the other place was you came right here. And you presented a presentation about carts. And so I think you've, uh, echoed, uh, the sentiment of, uh, some of us commissioners that, uh, so thank you for identifying that and your hard work on that.
Thank you.
Hi. Um, one big thing that the GCYLC did, we participated in the teen mental health first aid training. So if you heard before, um, the student needs assessment, uh, big, mental health was a big issue among teens and that they were concerned about. So we, um, partnered with Post Center in Raleigh and we, um, took courses over three days, over a span of three weeks, um, to learn to approach situations with mental health challenges or substance use challenges, um, with our peers that are experiencing, that are experiencing mental health issues. Um, we are certified in teen mental health first aid and we can now support and notice teens that experience substance use challenges. And we like be, we are a bridge and a buffer, um, for teens to connect them to an adult and get them the help that they need. These are the topics we covered. Um, one of the main topics we covered were types of mental health challenges, whether that be anxiety, disorder, eating disorders, et cetera. Um, also impacts mental health can have, that whether that be grades, attendance, or just overall mood of that team. And then helping a friend in crisis, which you can see on the right side of the screen, um, that is our members attending, um, showing the recovery position in which a person with substance use would have to go to, and now we know how to do that. Also the action plan, which if we are concerned about a peer or a friend or a teen that are experiencing mental health issues, to look for warning signs, ask how they are, listen to what they say, don't push them to get, get, get you to tell them more information. Um, help your friend connect with an adult, and then also that our friendship is important at the end of the day. These are few pictures of us along learning. We did have a little bit of fun. Um, and the top left corner is all of us with our certificates in the post center. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jordan and I live in District, District Six. And, and this summer, we participated in a civic leadership workshop. It was a six-hour-long workshop where we learned about gauging and a participatory democracy. Um, we learned things about communicating with each other, teamwork, leadership, critically thinking and public speaking. And we learned just how to collaborate as a community so we could better help the youth of our county.
So we are going to go back to our student needs assessment because one of our members have more to say about it. So if you would direct your attention to Ms. Ely.
Hi, everyone. I'm back again. Um, I'm here to talk about our students' needs survey. We all talk about change and the voice of the youth, but our council decided it was time to actually hear and document the needs and wants of our peers. By gathering information, we were not only able to make the youth of Granville County feel heard, but give them a voice that will affect change. Here are just a few of the examples on the right, as you can see, of what students said in response to our surveys and our polls. We had over two hundred responses from students all over the county from different districts who decided it was time for their voice to be heard, their needs to be met, and they needed a space to say what they needed to say, to say what needed to change in the county, what they liked, and what they would like to see different moving forward. Because the truth is, we need more families in Granville County. We don't want people to just go to school, go to college, and move out. We want people to stay in Granville County, continue to come back, and continue to have families in this county. With the results from this assessment, we've been able to plan and partake in projects to not only equip ourselves with the tools and skills to make change, but also make positive change for the youth in Granville County and make our voices feel heard. Thank you.
So we are, we have some upcoming projects and initiatives such as our yearly retreat, where we sort of have a bonding experience with our new members and our current members to get away of communication and sort of coming together as a team. We also have a team gay night slash open mic where kids can express themselves and have a little fun in a safe environment where they don't feel judged or crowded. Nursing home visits to help our senior community with, the Granville County Youth Leadership is now all about teens. We also serve all age groups from seniors, youth, everything. Mary Potter Historical Restoration. Mary Potter is one of our oldest schools in the county and we feel that we should keep up our environment and feel like it's a landmark of Granville County. We also want to do board partnerships. So the first year of our council, we sort of sat back and sort of observed how proceedings went, what they talked about, how they initiated things. So as the current year comes, we expect to more put our voices in, help do some of the projects that they suggest and sort of come together with the teens and adults in the community. And then we also have a closet for you, which is the teen closet for Granville County Youth Leadership Council, which is a, kids from all, kids, adults, seniors can donate clothes to a certain box at certain drop spots such as libraries or schools. We take the clothes and then we wash them and every, and provide it for teens that do not have the clothes. So as winters and different seasons come, we expect to have different clothes to help against the harsh environments for some people that can afford it. Some shoes, some interview clothes, just in case someone wants to get a job, we will probably provide, um, interview clothes so that they can feel professional and help them get a job. And now we, I would like to invite all the new members to come and introduce themselves to the Granville County Board of Commissioners.
My name is Dylan Roseman and I'm in District. My name is Dylan Roseman and I'm from District Five.
My name is Claire Glaven and I'm from District Seven.
My name is Kaylee Overby and I'm from District Five.
My name is Zatania Royser and I'm from District, District Three.
Hello, my name is Joseph Black and I'm from District Four.
Hello, my name is Anna Black and I'm from District Four.
My name is Jaclyn Joss and I'm from District Two.
And that is our Granville County Youth Leadership Council. Any, any questions for us today?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that, um, I was very, very privileged to have three different boards I serve on, to have these young, wonderful people put their voices out there. My little friends over here, not, you know, not little, I keep, they're my babies. But my adult friends over here that were on my committees, and, uh, thank you, thank you very much because you did make a big difference to let us know how you felt. And, um, you did have a vote, so thank you, thank you very much. You did a great job and I'm looking forward to meeting with everybody. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mrs.. Any other commissioner have any comment?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just highly impressed, and I tell you, my heart overflows with joy. I want to thank you for so boldly coming forth tonight, and also all the work that you've done. I took notes on several things, but I just wanted to mention, the fact that you feel as our young people that we need more mental health counselors. You are there with our, with your peers, that really means a lot to me. The other thing, it seems that the relationship with the SROs in our schools is important to you. We talk about that from a numbers game so often, about how many at this school, how many is at that school. But to hear you talk about the value of those relationships is very important. Highly impressed about wanting transportation to get to a job. And I tell you, that means a lot. I'm just excited when young people want to go to work, that really means a lot to me. And I read some things into this, and Ms. Purrier, maybe I can get more information, but better management of a healthy environment for learning. I really want to kind of dig into that and see exactly what's behind that, because all of you deserve that environment to be able to learn every day that you go to school. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Jay.
Can you hear me? Okay. Thank each and every one of you for what you did, your, all your presentation was great. Uh, I just got one thing, when you mentioned about mental health. And I want to know from your, your, y'all's perspective of what we can do to help with the mental problems that we have and going on with young people today. Uh, what kind of role can we do, or what we can we do to help them along? We, we see the problem, we know it's a problem. How can we help the problem?
I think for me personally, and for some of my peers, I think more, um, like you said, awareness would especially help. But I feel like if we became more, it became more of a priority for us. So, you know, you know, like, final exams are very stressful for kids. You know, they're studying twenty-four seven, worried about their grades. And I think maybe if like the schools or like the county hosted something that was sort of relieve pressure so kids could, you know, have a little ease off their mental stress and mental health. I feel like a lot of acting and events and procedures would very even beneficial for our teens, peers, and all youth in Granville County.
And the reason why. I said that I know a young lady that she been having this mental problem. And they go away and they treat her, and, and whatever they do, and come back. And a couple of weeks, a couple of months later, she doing the same thing. So are we happy? That, that, that's what get me. Are we happy that young person to, when they come back, to stay on the narrow road?
All right, our council actually started, um, our Minds Matter Committee for Mental Health. Change does not just start with people in this room. You guys can recognize mental health issues in teens and our youth and, and people of all ages. But it starts in our environments, our homes and our schools and our actual curriculums. We need to push mental health days, mental health classes in our actual school systems where we are every day, because we are not just in this room every day. Our peers are not in this room every day, our peers are in schools, our peers are at clubs, they're at sports. And if we don't acknowledge or recognize our kids' mental health now, there might not be a later. We need classes in schools, we need more talks, conversations. If we can teach our kids about everything else and expose them to all the harsh realities of this world, we need to give them ways of coping, we need more counselors in schools. We need our money allocated to things that will help our kids navigate this world, even after they leave our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, also, um, touching on the mental health and what Elena and Jermaine said, um, it starts in schools, and I think more trained professionals. I know my school, I'm a senior, I'm getting ready for college, we don't have a counselor. So me and my friends, we're just kind of going in blind, so stressful. And, um, I would say more trained professionals in, um, all, all aspects in college and mental health, and try to, um, give us like life after high school advice. And just, because it's a very stressful, and stress can, um, cause a lot of mental health problems. Um, so I would say just more trained professionals in our school systems to help our, connect, really connect with our students.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank each and every one of you. It's wonderful to hear things through the perspective of someone that's under twenty years old, that's living in days' time. It's easy for us to look at things through the lens of fifty, sixty, seventy-year-old people. It's very easy for us to do that. I can remember being twenty, but that, and, and under, but that was in the late sixties, early seventies. Totally different time. So although we look like antiques, we still can, we still want to hear and learn what's going on today and, and hear your perspective and try to see things through your eyes. Thank you so much, and I appreciate this program more than you can, more than I can ever express. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll echo what the board has said, you know, thank you very much as advocates for your own, uh, peer groups. Um, I know that a lot of times, you know, youth want to do what's cool, and it doesn't appear such, maybe in your, your, within your realm, but this is very, very cool. Um, y'all are the, the cutting edge of, of making sure that your voices are heard for your, your peer group. And to the parents that are of these youth in the audience tonight, thank you. Thank you for pushing your children to, to be in this, in this realm. And, and thank you for like allowing them to, um, advocate for themselves and actually give them the, the little bit of a push, whether it be a transportation thing or freeing of your time as a parent to make sure that your children are, are, are speaking for themselves. Um, many times we hear about helicopter parents or lawnmower parents that are out there, um, doing for their children as opposed to allowing their children the opportunity to do for themselves. And this is an excellent opportunity for, for those kids, for, for y'all, the youth, to, to advocate for yourselves. And again, for cooperative extension, Ms. Purrier, the catch-all, uh, and, and county government, cooperative extension, uh, with our youth and our, you know, family consumer sciences, and we're going to hear from crops agents later, um, cooperative extension. Uh, we are blessed to have as a county entity, the cooperative extension. Folks don't realize how many lives that entity touches. And I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. So appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
So, um, I'll, I'll end, I'll end with this. Ms. Purrier, I challenge that you present them before the school board. The school board will come with request to the county. And, uh, um, understanding that what I'm hearing them say is that in where they're educated, there is a gap in what they believe to be mental health, um, whether it's conveyed, uh, by counseling or through education. And then how it is transferred then to, uh, after-school hours and within their family unit. The two areas that mostly impact those beyond the budgetary process is our, uh, Granville County School System and Department of Social Services. Um, so, um, that would be two, uh, two, uh, board meetings that, uh, you may want to bring this group before, uh, because I think what they said tonight resonated with the, these board members, that, that's an area that, uh, this group has identified as a need. And, um, and also, there is a mental health forum coming up at the end of the month, I think on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth of November. And you'll be seeing more about that by Representative Sosserman is be putting those out at two locations in the county, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Purrier, Michaela Berryhill, is she going to be addressing, um, here she comes. And we'll update the board on educational efforts across the county. Thank you, Ms. Berryhill.
Good evening, everybody. Um, that's a really tough presentation to follow, but I'm going to try to do my best. So my name is Michaela Berryhill, and I'm the Field Crops Agent for Granville and Person Counties. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit tonight about what my educational program looks like. So the goal of my program is to provide research-based information to growers in the area so that they can have the most economically viable and environmentally sustainable operation. And so field crops encompasses multiple crops. The first one, probably the most notable one is tobacco. But I also cover corn, wheat, soybeans, and then I also cover alternative crops. Um, one example is sesame, so that's the plant sesame, you know, that goes on your hamburger buns. Um, that's what that looks like. So who cares, why does this matter? Just to give you a little bit of information, um, and background on agriculture on field crops in Granville County, last, or in twenty-twenty-one, Granville County had six thousand six hundred acres of soybeans, three thousand seven hundred acres of wheat, and two thousand four hundred acres of corn. Um, and in twenty-seventeen, we had three thousand four hundred and sixty-eight acres of tobacco. And that's the most up-to-date information that we're ever going to have, because they've stopped taking tobacco, um, information up since there's been such a reduction in tobacco growers to protect their privacy. But just to give you an idea of what that number kind of looks like, um, it is most likely down from that just because we've been losing a good number of tobacco growers. But in twenty-twenty-one, crops made up almost twenty million dollars in cash receipts. So it is a very impactful, it is very impactful to Granville County economy. So how do I get this information out to growers? The first way is through research plots. And so this is where we actually do the research in the field in our county. And so this past year, we had the first, um, variety trial for wheat, which is, um, done by the Official Variety Trial Program at NC State. It's a statewide program. In this past year, we had the first set of trials for corn, soybeans, and wheat. And then we also have that official variety trial for tobacco at the Oxford Tobacco Research Station. So that is a statewide effort. I also do county-level trials, small-pot trials. So this was a corn variety trial that, um, was harvested with small equipment. And then my favorite way to do research is actually on-farm testing. So this is a piece of equipment called a weigh wagon that I utilize that, um, allows for growers to use their equipment to plant and harvest trials. And then I can get that information to them on how those practices interacted on their own farm. So for example, this is a picture of a, um, corn variety trial, and I was able to get that information to the farmer about which varieties performed best on his farm. Utilize the information from these field, from these, um, research plots at field days. So these are events where growers can come out to the field and get to see, feel, and touch the research and see exactly how these practices look in person. And they also get the opportunity to interact with NC State specialists and get to talk to them one-on-one, which is very valuable to growers. I also have production meetings, which are kind of the classroom educational portion. These tend to occur, um, in the off-season, whenever farmers are starting to plan for the next year. And they get feedback on what the research, uh, results were from the previous year. And so then farmers can then implement the most recent, up-to-date practices, um, and the recommendations from NC State. And so that looks a little bit more, you know, it's indoors, it's more classroom style, and it's a lot more information, usually with presentations. Another, um, program event that I utilize are workshops, and these are more targeted. This picture here is from a pond workshop, so that was specifically talking to landowners about how to manage their ponds for weeds and for fish populations, um, which was a very popular event. We, uh, we've had more people sign up than we ever thought were going to whenever we, um, hosted this event. And then this is an example of a resource that I developed, and I know that that text is small. You don't have to worry about reading it, but, um, there's a grain variety selection tool that came out from NC State, and it is a little bit difficult to use, it's very technical. And so I provided a workshop for growers to come in person with their computers to get, um, recommendations for, and, uh, instruction on how to get the best varieties for their farm for the next year. I also do one-on-one technical visits. This is usually whenever a farmer calls with a problem or an idea or a new management practice that they want to implement. And I either go to their farm and go out to the field with them, or, um, they come into the office and we can discuss it one-on-one. So these are some pictures from some of those calls. The coloring is a little bit distorted on that screen, but there is a strip of, uh, dead, uh, wheat, basically, and it's where nitrogen was oversprayed, and so that's nitrogen burn. But there's a picture of hollow stalk, a disease in tobacco, that I helped identify and helps give the grower recommendations for. And that there is where, in a tobacco greenhouse, um, the temperature was set incorrectly, and it caused some crazy things to go on with the germination of the tobacco. So these are all situations where I've been able to help the farmers out by coming to their farms. So what's the impact of these educational events? Um, this past year, I had a total of two hundred and seventy-three attendees at my group events. Ninety-seven percent of those attendees said that they were satisfied with the programming. Seventy-seven percent of them said that they improved their knowledge. And fifty-three of them said that they were going to change their practices based on what they had learned. So I think for my second year on the job, that's, uh, decently impactful. And then I'm going to switch gears real quick and talk about, um, something else that I'm involved in, the Plant Sciences Initiative, or PSI at NC State. This is a group that is working on improving the world through plant science innovation, and it is an interdisciplinary, um, effort to tackle grand challenges. And so I've been one of twelve agents that has been selected to, um, be on the Plant Sciences Initiative Agent Network. And with that, our goal has been to, um, beta-test or user-test a software that recently came out of NC State University. So this is a photo of the, um, Southern Cover Crop Council's species selection tool. And that was a tool that was, um, developed and we tested out. I took it onto farms with farmers so that they could walk through it and tell me what was good, what was bad, and what needed to be changed. And I got that information back to the, um, software developers, and they have made changes based on what me and my cohort found out. And so part of me being on this Plant Sciences Initiative is I was tasked with inviting a group to come and tour the Plant Sciences Building and to see what all is going on there. So I wanted to invite the commissioners to come. Me and Teresa, we'll, uh, reach out to you and we'll figure out a date to potentially do that. But wanted to extend that so that you can come and see the impact that the Plant Sciences Initiative will have on the citizens of North Carolina. So with that, I will take any questions.
Any commissioner have any questions and comments? How's the drone?
Uh, the drone is good. The drone has been fixed. I had a slight mishap with the drone here recently, and it might have, uh, gotten into a tree, but we have got it fixed, and it's, uh, it's in the.
I mentioned it only to say that, you know, you use amazing technology. I know a lot of this stuff that you're, you're doing is, you know, with, um, you know, the, um, the apps and the software and your, your drone, I know you're a licensed pilot. Um, outstanding, have you here at Cooperative Extension. Again, Cooperative Extension, the catch-all, um, and it's just fantastic to have you onboard.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other comments, commissioners?
Thank you all so much for your time and for your support.
Thank you, ma'am, for what you do. With that, we'll now move to our public comments. Uh, public comments are limited to three minutes, but we only have one speaker tonight. Mr. Chris Stevens. Excuse me, Ms. Chris Stevens, or Mr. Stevens, apologize.
It happens frequently, I'm not upset. It's my choice to go by Chris, only my angry mother ever calls, called me Christine. So I avoid that. I live at thirty-five eighty-five Arbor Place, Wake Forest in South Granville. And I have sat on your side of the day as, as an elected official. So I understand and I empathize with the pressures and dilemmas you encounter on a daily basis, and I do appreciate your service. I also understand from having been in your place that those pressures can include not wanting to make a decision that will. wanting to make a decision that will upset your loved ones, alienate your commission colleagues, county employees, or your business associates. It may include not wanting to take a stand that will not be embraced by your political party because how will you get re-elected without those political donations? It might be feeling obliged to be the sage on the stage who has the definitive solution for every complex situation when you know full well that you lack critical information and counsel. I've been there. I actually really do understand. However, because I have stood in your shoes, I also understand the courage it takes to override the personal and special interest pressures under which you must labor. I believe each of you has an ethical core that knows when you can make an honest, thoughtful decision and when you should slow down and wait because you lack adequate information. I also know that insecurity drowns out that core ethical voice unless you rise up to be your better, stronger selves. The tension between rampant development on small lots that increase revenues and address housing availability and ensuring adequate residential drinking water now and in the future is a complex ethical and practical dilemma. No one should expect you to have the one right answer. The planet, this country, and our county are all grappling with a problem whose scope is almost beyond our imagination: not enough water for everyone. Unfortunately, complex issues do not generally benefit from avoidance or neglect. Ensuring adequate residential drinking water is one such issue. I ask that you reinstate the one-acre minimum lot size and reach out in all directions for expertise and unbiased counsel until a reasoned, informed decision is possible. I will be sending you my good wishes and watching. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We're now moving to the next item, Public Hearing of Proposed Schedules, Standards, and Rules. Ms. Jenny Griffin from our tax office. Now, the purpose of this public hearing is to hold the required public hearing to hear comments from the public before adopting the final schedule, standards, and rules. I now declare the public hearing open. At this time, I recognize Ms. Jenny Griffin, the Tax Administrator, for a brief overview.
On October 16th, I submitted the proposed schedules, standards, and rules to the Board of County Commissioners. This is pretty much a book with values that are very complex, from everything from an A-grade home to an E-grade home, as far as land, topography, outbuildings. So, today, we're here to let's see what the public has to say about the schedules. We've headed out in our office. It's, it was on the county website as well, the Schedule of Values.
What are you recommending, ma'am?
Well, I recommend that, that we meet again on the 20th to possibly approve the schedule.
Does the board have any questions? Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions, would you like to come forward? Please come forward.
I need your chance to look at the county site.
Wait, wait till you get through to the set speaker.
Hi, Alice Mees, 1103 Lake Ridge Drive, Falls Meadows. I didn't get any chance to look at the county site. So, if you're citing something, can you give me a percentage increase, decrease, what you think the tax rate is? Is this the information that you're providing tonight? No?
Not, not currently.
Or is this a valuation?
It, what it is, we're under a re-evaluation.
I know that.
It is a book of schedules.
It's not a Q and A.
Right. I know basic market value. Right, okay. So...
So, Ms. Mees, if you would make your comments?
Oh, my comment is, we're, so this is online. I can find what information.
You're going to find the Schedule of Values, because right now, they're doing sales starts until December 31st.
Oh, until December 31st. Okay, thank you. You asked of questions. I always have them.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Jenny, is this it, Jenny? That's it. So, it's a minor little book.
A minor little book.
It's a baby book, you know, it's nighttime reading. But we have one up here.
And that is available at your office and online, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the public that has a question, or at least a comment? Excuse me, it's a comment, that come forward.
It's a comment, ma'am.
It's a comment, ma'am, but it is online. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, it is online. Does the board have any questions? I declare the public meeting closed. Does the board need any further clarification on what's the pleasure of the board? The recommendation is, on the public hearing, the Tax Administrator recommends the board consider approving the proposed schedule, standards, and rules at the next scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting, not tonight. Okay? What's the pleasure of the board?
As Chairman, most of, we were receptive recommendation coming from our Tax Administration.
Okay, sir. Second.
Second.
Mr. Williford, second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item will be two items, that we will have a joint opening of two public hearings. The purpose of the public hearing is the views of the public on potential sale by Kartar Regional Economic Development Corporation of approximately 127.6 acres in Triangle North Granville Business Park to Portman Industrial LLC. And the other item is, is the purpose, is to receive the views of the public on the proposed appropriation expenditure of county funds not to exceed $1,100,000 to reimburse the Portman Industrial LLC, the company, for the cost of the site preparation on land to be acquired by the company from the Kartar Regional Economic Development Corporation, consisting of 127.16 acres off Taps Creek Road and Triangle North Business Park site. I now declare the hearings open. At this time, Ms. Boone.
Good evening, Chairman May, Commissioners, and citizens of Granville County. And my name is Audrey Boone. I'm the interim Executive Director of the Granville County Economic Development Office, and it is with great pleasure that I appear before you all this evening to help present this exciting opportunity. As stated in the chairman's remarks, the purpose of the first public hearing is to hear the views of the public on the potential sale of the land by Kartar Regional EDC of approximately 127.16 acres in Triangle North Business Park to Portman Industrial. The purpose of the second public hearing is to receive the views of the public on the proposed appropriation expenditure of county funds, not to exceed $1,100,000 to reimburse Portman for the cost of site preparation on that land. The company, as the developer, will construct on the site at least two separate buildings together comprising no less than 940,000 square feet in the aggregate for manufacturing, research and development, life sciences, warehouse, distribution, logistics, or similar purposes. As stated, the purchase price of the site will be $35,000 per acre. The expected purchase price will be approximately $4,450,600, with the net sales proceeds be paid to Granville County pursuant to an amended development agreement. Additionally, I know the board, as well as the staff, believes that the development of this site will stimulate and stabilize the local economy and result in the creation of a substantial number of new, permanent, full-time jobs in the county. And as part of its contract to purchase the site, the company has agreed to certain restrictions on the use of the property that the county believes will further help attract jobs that will pay at or above the median average wage in the county. The costs for which the county will reimburse the company include clearing and grading the site and associated erosion control and stormwater control activities. As stated, the costs of such activities to the county will not exceed $1,100,000. Following the public hearing and after all information has been reviewed and the board has had an opportunity to ask its questions of the team, I would request approval of the contract for the purchase of real property to Portman Industrial, and that the county manager and county attorney be authorized to finalize an economic development agreement with the company, with the county manager, to execute the agreement. I would also request approval of the total $1,100,000 incentive package, and that the county manager and county attorney be authorized to negotiate a grant contract with the company, which would be brought back to the board for approval at a later meeting. And I would now like to introduce you to other members of the team in the order that they will be presenting information tonight. Granville County Attorney Jim Renn, Managing Director of Industrial Projects with Portman Industrial, John Gaskin, and Vice President of Lee &amp; Associates, Scott Hadley. They will all be providing more information regarding this project.
Thank you, Ms. Boone. At this time, is there anyone wishing to speak or come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record regarding these matters? Again, there's two matters.
Would you like us to go ahead through the presentation and then give people a chance?
You can, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. I'd like to present the contract to you tonight. You all have it in your agenda packet, but for both you and the public, I'd like to go through the prominent details of the contract. As Audrey mentioned, the purchase price is $35,000 per acre, as determined by the final subdivision plant. That plant currently shows 127.16 acres, which will result in a total sales price of $4,450,600. There's a $100,000 earnest money deposit required to be deposited within five days of the effective date of the purchase and sale agreement. The earnest money will be applied to the purchase price at closing. There'll be an initial due diligence period of 120 days, with up to two 60-day extension periods. The extensions may only be exercised if any discretionary final approvals remain outstanding and prior notices are provided. Examination periods are limited solely to obtaining all discretionary final approvals. Portman may conduct a Phase 1 environmental site assessment initially, and a Phase 2 site assessment, environmental assessment, may only be conducted if recommended by a licensed environmental consultant. Portman must provide evidence of adequate insurance before performing any test on the property. Portman will indemnify both Granville County and the Kartar Regional Economic Development Corporation for claims or losses arising out of Portman's due diligence, with certain customary exceptions. This is an important provision. This is a declaration amendment for the restrictive covenants on the property. Portman and Kartar Regional Economic Development Corporation shall negotiate and agree on an amendment to the existing declaration of restrictive covenants, such that, A, Portman shall exclusively market, lease, or sell the project to manufacturing, life science, biotech, and/or product assembly end-users until the date that is three months following Portman's purchase, I'm sorry, following Portman's completion of the first phase of the project. We anticipate that period to be approximately 27 months. If no such end-user secured within the three-month period following substantial completion of the project, Portman may market, sell, or lease the project to any industrial user that's allowed by the zoning code and the covenants, except as otherwise amended, including warehouse and distribution users. And so, the purpose of that restriction is that during the first 27 months approximately, so that's the first period of time into three months after substantial completion of the first phase of the project, the property will not be marketed to warehousing and distribution users, primary, who have that as a primary use. The project, the total project on all 510 acres is limited to 1 million square feet of warehouse and distribution space as a primary use, and only 400,000 square feet in the first phase of the project. The first phase of the project consists of approximately 980,000 square feet of space. No portion of the project shall be used for last-mile distribution uses without the seller's prior consent, when that means there'll be no deliveries directly from the site to Access easement, Portman and Triangle North, or Kartar Regional Economic Development Corporation, shall negotiate and agree on the location of a 60-foot-wide, non-exclusive access easement for the benefit of the property over a portion of Track 1B and related access easement agreement. So, this is, this easement is to access property owned by Kartar Regional Economic Development Corporation, which the county assisted Kartar in acquiring, which is located at the corner of Highway 158 and Taps Creek Road. That property has potential as a future commercial site. The project, as we've been describing it, consists of at least two separate buildings together comprising no less than 940,000 square feet in the aggregate of space for warehouse, distribution, logistics, manufacturing, research and development, life sciences, or similar industrial or logistics purposes. The first phase of the project is a building consisting of 285,000 square feet approximately. Portman's obligations under the contract are contingent on the property being finally approved for the project. Final approval means that all subdivision, zoning, site plan, variance, and other government approvals and permits, including without limitation, those approvals and permits described in the PSA permitting the property to be developed and used for the project have been received, that no amendments or conditions thereto not consented to by Portman have been made, that all appeals or challenges have been fully and finally resolved. So, basically, they have to get final approval for the construction of their first phase of the project. Portman must commence vertical construction of a portion of the project on either Track 1B, which would be to the south side of Triangle North Drive, or 1C, which would be to the north of Triangle North Drive, within 12 months following closing. Portman must commence vertical construction of the second phase of the project within 12 months of the completion of the first phase. Vertical construction is deemed to have commenced upon the pouring of the foundation of the applicable phase. So, that's another important provision here. This is a requirement that they begin construction within 12 months after closing. And so, that would be on the first 285,000-square-foot building. And then, they have a contractual requirement to begin construction on the second building within 12 months after completion of the first building. Portman's obligation to close is contingent on several customary conditions, but there are few unique conditions. One, the subdivision plant, subdividing the property from the overall property, from the overall 510 acres, must have been recorded. Final approvals must have been received. Kartar Regional Economic Development Corporation and Granville County shall have caused water, sewer, and utilities to be extended to the boundary of the property with sufficient capacity to support the project. And Portman shall have entered into an agreement with the county, with the county agreeing to provide incentives worth at least $1.1 million to Portman, as Audrey described, to offset the cost of site development. Closing will occur within 30 days following the date on which all closing conditions and the purchase and sale agreement have been met, and all final approvals have been maintained, have been obtained. Closing must occur within 360 days after the end of the due diligence period. That is, if the due diligence period is not extending, it's extended, closing must occur within 480 days after the PSA is signed. There is also a right of first refusal contained in the, in the contract where Kartar Regional Economic Development Corporation may not offer to sell or enter into any, any option of contract to sell any portion of the project. to sell any portion of the property to another speculative developer as long as the PSA is in effect. Portman has an exclusive right of first refusal for the entire 510-acre overall parcel. However, that doesn't prevent Carter Regional Economic Development Corporation in Grahamville County selling property within the remainder of the park to exempt industrial users. And so that would be transfers of any portion of the overall property to a third-party industrial end-user that intends to acquire the property for the development, either directly or through an affiliate of one or more, either directly or through an affiliate of an industrial park to be built on a non-speculative basis, excluding projects to be used primarily for warehousing and distribution. The project must also receive a tax incentive from the state, the county, or an applicable local municipality in connection with the development, and the end-user must directly operate the project following completion. So basically, to say that in clear language, Portman has a right of first refusal if we intend to sell the property to any other speculative developer. If we get an economic development project who intends to be an end-user of the property, that right of first refusal doesn't exist. And so we can sell it to economic development prospect without further right of first refusal in favor of Portman. If Triangle North or Carter Regional Economic Development Corporation defaults in its covenants under the contract, Portman's sole and exclusive remedy is an action for specific performance or the return of the earnest money deposit in termination of the purchase and sale agreement. If Portman defaults under its obligation, our sole remedy is the return of the earnest money. If Portman's default is failure to commence construction by the applicable deadlines mentioned earlier, Carter's sole remedy will be an agreed amount of liquidated damages per day, subject to an overall cap. Upon reaching the cap, we will have the right to repurchase the property for the purchase price or portion thereof based on the acreage if it's less than all the property. The liquidated damages amount of $500 per day subject to a cap of $1 million in the aggregate. So again, once, if they don't meet their obligations under the contract, there will be liquidated damages, and then we would have a right to repurchase the property. Just one other thing I thought I ought to briefly explain for you, for the board and for the public, is that this property is under unique ownership. Several years ago, I think actually over 20 years ago now, we had legislation passed that granted special status to industrial parks in Grahamville County, Vance County, Franklin County, and Warren County. And that joint effort is called the Carter Regional Economic Development Corporation or Triangle North. And those parks are owned by, legal title is held by Carter Regional Economic Development Corporation, but Grahamville County is the economic owner of the property. Grahamville County has the right to demand that property back at any time from Carter. The reason it's structured that way is to get the benefit of special legislation that allows tax revenues to be split between the four county industrial parks and also to allow the parks in Grahamville County and Franklin County to get Tier One Economic Development incentive status, which allows us to provide better tax benefits to concerns locating in the park. So again, it's a joint regional effort, and the reason that you heard me refer to the Carter Regional Economic Development Corporation is because they are the title holder of the property under the legislation that was passed more than 20 years ago to support this project. And Grahamville County is the economic interests owner who fronted the money for the project. When this project is sold, the gross, I'm sorry, the net sales proceeds will come back to Grahamville County. And when we make the incentive payment to Portman, Grahamville County will be repaid in full from tax revenues before distributions go out to the other counties. So that's the way that economic development agreement works between the four counties. And I'm happy to pause here and answer any questions you have, or I can come back up later and answer them after others have presented.
Let's come back to them later, Mr. Renn, providing the public an opportunity to speak now.
Okay, thank you.
The floor is now open to anyone wishing to speak. Okay. Got it, got it. Would you like, Mr. Gaskin?
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Gaskin. I represent Portman Industrial LLC, who is the purchaser for this transaction. I also represent Portman Holdings, who is the developer and owner for all industrial projects that we do across the United States. First of all, thank you, Mr. Renn, for that very thorough review of the contract terms. I think, as the Commissioners may see, we spent well over a year putting this agreement together. I'm gonna, but I think it's very important that you get to know who the buyer is, because we really do see this over the long term, and this is a very long-term project, as a partnership between us and the county in Carter. So I'd like to introduce Portman, talk to you about our development expertise. I'd like to give some examples of some specific projects of what I think we might be able to expect here. I'd like to introduce my team members to you. And lastly, I'd like to share with you the marketing strategy associated with this project. Is that acceptable?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. First of all, again, my name is John Gaskin. I'm the Managing Director of Everything Industrial Logistics for the company across the United States. I have with me Ken Skinner, if you could please stand, who is our Vice President of Construction, and with him, Alex Seifert, who is a Development Associate on the industrial side as well. Al Williams is with Jones Lang and the Sol. This is our exclusive leasing and marketing agent for this particular property. Also, I'd like to introduce Keith Horton. Keith Horton is Managing Director for Frampton Construction. They will be our general contractor for this project. We also have Thomas and Hutton, who we have engaged as our civil engineers as well. So as I'll share with you, we've already have the team together as well, and a very experienced team with a lot of experience in the Carolinas. A little bit about Portman, a little bit about Portman. John Portman founded this company in 1957. John is an Atlanta native. He's a Georgia Tech grad. What was so interesting about Mr. Portman is he was just a renowned architect. But what's so, what was so even more interesting about Mr. Portman is he was also a developer. Many times, you have the architect and you have the developer. The architect provides plans to the developer, and the developer says, there's no way I'm going to build that. That's crazy, and it's too expensive, and it's too modern, and it's too this. Well, John Portman would have none of that. So John Portman decided that John Portman would develop what he designed. And his designs are iconic, and his designs are literally around the world. Since 1957, we have developed over 80 million square feet of space and deployed over $20 billion in capital for these projects. Some of the, well, I'm sorry, I guess I should be doing a slide. Can you see here? There we are. So some of the product sectors that we're involved in, I run the industrial logistics. We also have a line, life sciences focus. We also have office, residential hospitality, and mixed use. Our projects really span the globe. We did a lot of work over in Asia and in Europe. Mostly now, all of our operations are now consolidated in the United States. That was, that was purposeful, which we completed the projects that we were doing. They were mostly large hospitality projects outside the United States. And pre-COVID, we decided to do all of our work inside the United States. So although we have the international experience, everything that we're doing now is really inside the United States. We have projects ranging from Atlanta to Austin, Boston, Seattle, Nashville, the Carolinas, you name it, we're pretty much there. Just to give you an idea, some of the sort of, I call legacy projects. These projects we're known for, if you look at the skyline of Atlanta, that's basically John Portman. John did 14 high-rise and mid-rise buildings, which really make up a large part of the skyline of it in Atlanta, including the Peachtree Center, the Atlanta Marriott Marquis, the Weston Peachtree Plaza, among other iconic projects. In San Francisco, if you've probably been to the Embarcadero Center, about a 4 million square feet project there. And then you have projects down in Charlotte, and you have projects over in Seattle, and you have projects over in Beijing as well. So if we go now to the area that I, that I focus mostly on, that is the industrial logistics. And really, what we have done since 2001, if you look at that, we have developed, we have acquired, I'm sorry, about 808 acres of land, which we're currently in the process of developing every, every little bit of it. So far, at this stage, right now, we have 8 million square feet under construction. 4 million square feet of that has actually been completed, and we've deployed about $1.2 billion in property. Portman Industrial's primary focus is the development of modern logistics facilities. This is where companies are wanting to put their businesses now. The antiquated 18-foot clear truck courts that don't make sense, maybe even docks that don't even work anymore, are where companies are taking flight from, and they are going to the modern logistics facilities where they can find greater efficiencies, whether that is in terms of the operations inside or the efficiencies associated with energy and water usage and circulation of air and things of that nature. We focus not only on logistics corridors, but we focus on life science, biotech facilities. We focus on large warehouse and distribution, on key logistics corridors, and we do focus on e-commerce. E-commerce is quickly growing in the United States. We don't really do, and we're agreeing to restrict ourselves from doing last mile. We don't like those actually in our particular parks, but we, but we will do some of the larger centers where they may be storing product. We don't expect really a lot of that here. We really expect, based on what we're seeing in this market and what we're seeing what's happening with this kind of space that we build, that it's going to be geared more toward the life science, the biotech, advanced manufacturing, some light assembly, could be freezer cooler, and we could expect a data center in this area as well. I want to give you an example of something that happened that was very, very unique, and we're seeing this across the United States, and that's the Longhorn Junction project. This is a project that we did in Austin, Texas, and we were actually placing a large warehouse distribution center right on I-35. And there was very little warehouse and distribution space in Austin, so we just assumed that we would get a warehouse distribution tenant. That's the exact opposite of what happened. This is now the largest world's manufacturing operation of solar residential shingles in the United States by GAF Energy. We're seeing this happen across the board wherever we're developing, where you will build your speculative product, but there is such a lack of available space, there's no time for ground-up build-to-suit developments. So what's ending up inside of our building is life sciences, data centers, freezer cooler, automotive, machinery. It's just absolutely amazing what's happened in this industry because vacancy is so incredibly low, and that includes the Raleigh-Durham market. We're building an office building in Seattle right now, and we have over 157,000 square feet in that dedicated just to life sciences, because that's what's being demanded in the market. If you look at the Camp Hall Center, this is the one on the left, you see four buildings right there. What was so interesting about this, we built this in Charleston, and this is about 200, I'm sorry, 2,157,000 square feet of space in three buildings. Over 50% of it is automotive. We have life sciences, we have manufacturing, and we have light assembly. Where this was being built almost exclusively for warehouse and distribution, the automotive is actually Volvo. This is three miles of their, of their facility, and these are now the critical mission facilities of fulfilling all of the parts, components parts that go into the plant. If anything happens in our facilities here, that plant shuts down. So that's how these warehouse and distribution facilities often become critically intertwined with the operation of what's happening in the manufacturing facility. So things have really become, really become entwined in that regard. I'm not going to go through all these examples because there's too many, but we, you know, we really pride ourselves in putting ourselves in the path of progress, especially putting ourselves in these, these great diverse centers where you have education and hospitals and whatnot in order to take advantage of the, the life sciences, which is the science of life, and the biotech and all the other ancillary uses that are around. I want to talk a little bit about the park now and our vision and for the park. First of all, instead of this being an industrial park, we really see this as a Triangle North Research Park. We're going to build a variety of products, a variety of sizes that will attract a lot of different users. The other thing that we're doing that's different than our standard speculative project is we are modifying our spec for our buildings in order to better reinforce the roof for solar panels on the top. Also, when you end up getting biotech, life sciences, et cetera, you have a lot what's we call RTUs. These are, air conditioning units are on top of the facilities. So you need to really beef up that roof structure. It is speculative development, you know, pure warehouse distribution, we wouldn't do. But, but that's how we're designing these projects to be ready for those particular users. We're also doing reinforced rebar in the slabs because usually the machinery that's going to come in with manufacturing, other is going to be heavier, so we're going to reinforce our slabs. The other thing we're doing is we're spending more time on power and power distribution. Generally, when it's life sciences, when it's manufacturing, you know, biotech, it is a high-energy user. And so we are getting ahead of that by, with, with the way that we are sizing our conduit, our switchgear, and our distribution center throughout the building. So we put a lot, this is not your standard, what I would call a speculative warehouse distribution building. This is a building that is being built for the type of users that we think are going to be coming into the marketplace. Otherwise, quite frankly, we wouldn't spend that money. If it was pure distribution, I would have my standard roof. I would have my standard electric. I'd have my standard floors, but we're not. We want to be able to attract the type of tenants that we've been talking about with the buy of the manufacturing life science. I think we're going to end up with some, some manufacturing related to life sciences as well, and we have to be ready for the type of buildings and the product that we bring. Don't get me wrong, we're still going on a speculative basis. We're going to build these without the tenants being in tow, but we're going to build a product that attracts those particular tenants, if that makes sense. So the first phase of the project is going to be the first building, which is the 284-580. That's going to be a single-load facility, probably 32-foot clear. That is the perfect size for any kind of life science, bio-manufacturing, anything right in that, that, that size. The larger facility that will follow within a year, and I, and it never seems to happen that way, you get the first building, you get the walls up, you're leased, and then we will immediately start the next building. But the 658 building is going to be geared toward more of a manufacturing operations. That Boston project that I talked to you about a minute ago, that was, that was a, basically roughly a 450,000-square-foot facility. When I went back to our user, and they're clients of ours, the manufacturer, and I said to them, what would you do different if it was simply a ground-up build-to-suit development? He said, I'd make it slightly bigger, and I would, I would have gotten rid of four dock doors, but that's it. Everything else that you have in your building would suit us just fine. Column spacing, drive-in doors, ESFR, which is our fire suppression system, et cetera, et cetera, it all works. So everything that we're building works toward the uses that we are, we are actually looking for. So that first phase, that first building, we will most likely, in order to have the site properly balanced, this is about 127 acres, will grade the entire site at one time. And so the grading package, because I know there's an incentive involved here, just our grading package is about 15.5 million, and the total project cost for these three buildings is right around $115 million. So that will be our investment. That's our investment. That's not what's going inside the box. In the building that I mentioned earlier that we built in San Antonio for GAF Energy, our project was 60 million. They put 55 million inside the box with their manufacturing. By the way, 265 jobs, two shifts there. So these are, you know, these are also big job producers, not, not only in terms of the, you know, the FFNE and the, and the personal property, but these, these are large capital investments, but they bring in a lot of good and high-paying jobs, which is, which is endemic to this, to this type of industry. If you look at the overall project, I, this is really a five-year project. The first phase, probably in, in 18 to 24 months, and then you move into the second phase. You do have to put a culvert in, in order to allow the water to properly drain, so you don't mess with the flood system at all. But then you would see the second phase, particularly, there could be a large million-square-foot user. That could also be broken up into two 500s. But this is just, this is just a plan. And then the third phase, it actually brings you to the, to the next interchange at I-85. So you would have two points of ingress and egress once the project is complete. You would not be going through any residential areas. You're just going to be going straight out of the project on one end or, or the other. But it's a very linear park, but, but we've done a lot of these before. But I think what's so nice about it is you, you just got to get going. out of the project on one end or or the other. But it's a very linear park, but but we've done a lot of these before. But I think what's so nice about it is you, you just got to get going. And once you get going, the activity starts. And so I fully expect that while we're building the first two buildings, there's going to be inquiries as to phase two, and there will be inquiries as to phase three because people know where they like to be. But you got to get the first building going. That is the key. I don't, I don't like that baseball analogy. If you build it, they will come, but it's absolutely true. So that's what we'll be focusing on. But that's our overall vision for the park. I've been doing this, I'm a 30-year veteran in in commercial real estate specifically in this this type of of development, and the parks never end up exactly as you put them on paper day one. A lot of exciting things happen, quite frankly, as you go. I do want to just emphasize the fact that we've already put a lot of effort into this over a year in negotiating the contract with the county. We also have our team together. Frampton Construction is, quite frankly, one of the premier general contractors in the southeast. We have done right now over two and a half million square feet with them. McMillan-Paston Smith out of Charlotte is our lead architect on this particular project. I don't know if I, I didn't put a rendering here, but I'll get you a rendering of what our, what all of our buildings look like. It's a very, it's a very sophisticated, very polished, a very sleek look. And then we have Thomas and Hunt, as I introduced earlier, as our civil engineer. This is the local office. We always use local offices. Truly, your civil engineer has to know the ground better than better than anybody else. Thomas and Hunt in this particular market is very strong, and I already introduced the JLL team. JLL is an international company. Our company has done transactions with them literally all over the world, and we're working with them exclusively right now in the Carolinas as well. But you see two other members, and that's the Carter and the County, because we see them as part of our partnership team, because we can't do it without each other. You're going to be receiving inquiries and we'll be helping you with those. We can do the site planning, we can do the things that help you be successful in the event that you're going to be selling to an end user as well. But we do see this very, very, very much as a partnership. So what we're going to be doing over the next 27 months, and I know that seems like a long time, but it takes a time, it always takes time to entitle a property, which you can actually go vertical and deliver the properties. So we will be exclusively marketing this, as Mr. Wren mentioned, you know, for as a research park and as a type of users that we all want to see in terms of, you know, the life sciences, the biotech, manufacturing related to that. So not only do we have the property website, we have signage. We would like to, we're going to be, we're going to be positioning this and showing this to you soon with our architect. We'd like to modernize the entrance to the park. We would like to rename the park the Triangle North Research Park as opposed to just Triangle North. Let's tell people what we're looking for and modernize the signage and the entry associated with that park. There will be, we will have signs that have QR codes that bring everybody to our brochures and to more information. We have drone videos of everything that we do so we can do the park. We do, we do 3D renderings of everything that we're going to do so people can visualize how this park is going to be laid, how it's going to be laid out over time. We have animated storytelling and, you know, and like I said, a digital project tour. So that starts day one. Tomorrow, if if we are fortunate enough to have this approved by the county, we actually go ahead and start with our, we start our kickoff with our design team on this entire project and every one of the the individuals that I mentioned up there. So really, again, I want to just, I want to emphasize, emphasize, emphasize that, yes, we build an industrial-type product, but it is inside that industrial-type product that is where all these users go. It's very rare now there's time to do ground-up development. Oh, by the way, that's why we also make our buildings move in ready. When you come to one of our buildings, you already have the build-out office, you already have 30-foot candle lighting, and then you already have dock packages at all the dock doors. So our buildings are truly move-in ready. So if you look at us as compared to our competition, who does what's called a cold dark shell, you know, they look at our building, they can start operating day one. You look at our competition's building, it's going to take six months to be able to get the lighting and to do all the work that we've already done. So we try, we put that capital investment out there upfront in order to make our projects that much more attractive. That is all I have.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to Mr. Hadley now, if it's okay with you, and we'll follow up with questions at the appropriate time.
Sure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gaskin.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Scott Hadland with Lee &amp; Associates out of Raleigh, North Carolina. I am the marketing broker for the park and was asked to provide values on properties. And everybody should have a red folder in front of them. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to go through it. But basically, what I did is I pulled comps from different areas and I tried to stay out of Wake County, Durham County, and Johnson County for obvious reasons. But I have provided you with some comparable sales down in the Benson, which is right at the Johnson County line with Horncity County. It's at I-40, I-95. There were three tracts of land that sold down there in 2020. They were industrial properties. They sold at $22,903 an acre. Today, those properties are on the market at $45,000 an acre. There is a half a million-square-foot cross-stalk facility being built in Benson at this time. It was, two properties were purchased for that. They were purchased in '22. One was a 55.6-acre tract at about $45,000 an acre. Another $315,000 price was paid for 36 acres adjacent to it to provide more parking, more access, and compensate for some of the fact that the original purchased property had a lot of water or some wet areas that were unusable. There was land sold at the Rooms-to-Go Furniture Factory there in Distribution Center in Dunn. This property sold in '21 at $16,500 an acre. The property was under contract at $35,000 an acre. It fell out of contract probably about three weeks, four weeks ago. But that just shows you the growth that they saw. I've also got comparable sales for Sanford and Lee County. There were four tracts of land that were sold at the end of 2022, and these properties were close to 200 acres. They sold right at the $35,000-an-acre range. Sewer is at that site. Sewer will serve the Moncur Mega Site or the Triangle Innovation Point Site, as it's called now. Water is in the area, but there's not a sufficient amount of water to really serve the area. There's just not enough pressure and not enough capacity. These sites are raw land, unlike the Triangle, unlike Triangle North Granville, which is going to have a road, water, and sewer into the park. These are just literally raw land adjacent to the airport. Over in Lower Moncur, excuse me, that's Lower Moncur Road, that's along the same. There's been property sold out on Hawkins Avenue. It's the old Lee Brick Plant. It was bought by Helix Ventures out of Raleigh. They paid $27,542 an acre for approximately 500 acres. This land is heavy industrial. It has rail, gas, water, and sewer. There are some topo setbacks in it, and there are some, there are some wetlands that cut into some of the total acreage that's usable. That gives you kind of a rough idea of things that surround us here. I've also pulled together the value, the asking prices of the local industrial parks that we compete with. Triangle North Franklin, they have their land on the market at $30,000 an acre. We have six acres up there under contract right now at $30,000 an acre. Sanford, their Lee County, what they call their Enterprise Park, they're at $65,000 an acre. That's the price that they use in their build-to-suits for Sammy uses in their construction. So that's the price that has been built into their products that they have done build-to-suits and either leased or sold. Vance County, the park there, it's a 400-acre park. We're at 19.5 an acre. That property up there has quite a few creeks and wet areas, and a lot of it is expensive to develop. Nash County has a corporate park in Middlesex off Highway 264. Property there is $30,000 an acre. The Wilson Corporate Center off I-95 is at $35,000 an acre, water, sewer, gas. There is rail on a portion of it. They're at 35 an acre. And then Triangle Innovation Point in Chatham County, I'm going to go with a number of 55,000 an acre. It's varied on different properties out there, but we're just going to run with that. I will say that Project Clear has a 45-acre industrial site under contract in Eastfield Development, which is down in Selma. It's to the east of I-95. That property's under contract at 125 an acre, just to give you an idea of what's going on in Johnson County. And again, I've mentioned that there's a $30,000 acre price on six acres at Triangle North Franklin. We have this property valued in Granville County at $35,000 an acre. If you look at what's bracketed around us, it's a little bit cheaper to the north. As you get back closer to the park, it's 35 to 40. As you get down into Sanford, it's 35 up to the 60, $65,000 an acre. $35,000 an acre is a very good price for the park, and I believe that the valuations that everybody has come to are in line with what the market is showing and what the market will support.
And just for the board's context, the reason that this information is being presented is that the Economic Development Statute, General Statute 158-7.1D requires that at conclusion of the public hearing, you all find that the value, the value of the property, taking into account any restrictions, et cetera, that are placed on the property. So I think Scott has presented information to indicate that the fair market, the property's being sold fair market value, but that's the board's determination ultimately to make.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, your honor. Ms. Boone, do you have any follow-up to the presentation in regards to wage and data information?
And while she's coming up, I would just also add that the statute also requires that there be determination made of the of the probable median hourly wage for the property.
Thank you. And I will preface my statement with, of course, we don't have crystal balls to look into to know that this is for sure, what these numbers will will remain. But taking this information from Jobs EQ, which is a data source provided us through our partnership with the Carter Regional Council of Governments, I was able to pull average annual salaries estimated as of the second quarter of 2023 for the target industries that Granville County has identified as ideal industries to recruit and retain into our local economy, as well as the targeted industries laid out in the marketing agreement through the partnership with Jones Ling LaSalle and Portman Industrial and the other entities mentioned. So looking up here on on your screens or in your packet, listing out in alphabetical order from advanced manufacturing to transportation and warehousing, these are the average annual salaries according to this data source of what we could expect to see. Of course, these are estimates, but these are the type of users that we will ultimately be targeting through our recruitment and outreach efforts to land as end users into the park.
Okay, thank you. Any questions at this time for Ms. Boone? Okay, thank you, Ms. Boone. We'll move to Mr. Wren. And what we'll do, Mr. Wren, is we'll ask you some questions, and the board may ask questions of the individuals that present it. And then we will provide after that point opportunity for the public to make any comments.
Okay, thank you. Do you want me to go back down to the podium and you want me to?
Yes, sir, if you would.
Okay.
And Mr. Gaskins, I would like for you to come down too, if you don't mind. And Mr. Hadley. I'm sure we may, we may get to some of the other gentlemen, but... At this time, board, you may ask your questions that you, any questions you desire. And this is a major, a major investment, and get the questions that you ask answered.
Yes. Mr. Chair, if I may, start off, kind of keeping it simple. Jim, do you think this is a good deal for, you think this is a good agreement for the county, and if so, why?
I do. As Mr. Gaskin mentioned a couple of times, and I'm not sure if he was making a value judgment on this or not, but he said it took us over a year to negotiate this agreement. And during that year, we negotiated hard for things we thought were a benefit to the county. We negotiated to get the sales price of what we believe the true fair market value of the property is. So that was important to us. We also thought it was important to focus on manufacturing, life sciences, and that type of tenant for the park rather than just a pure distribution play to begin with. So we negotiated hard for that. Another important thing about this contract is it allows us to invest in infrastructure for the park that will allow not only this first phase to develop, but additional phases. And it's much easier to do that when you know there's going to be a return on investment from doing it immediately. So instead of doing it on a speculative basis, we're doing it with a tenant in hand or a developer in hand. So we think that's important. And probably one of the most important things is we're partnering with a well-known development firm to do this, who is also bringing well-known and experienced partners to the table, such as this engineering and architecture team, its brokerage team. And we feel good about the whole group and believe that they they can perform. Thank you.
Any other commissioners at this time? Mr. Wiliford.
Mr. Gaskin, you mentioned that the, first off, my name is Rob Wiliford. I'm District Two, and this project is almost literally at my back door. I live right down the road. So we've known for years this was coming. I think it's great news, but we do have concerns. One of the things, coming off of Exit 206, you mentioned that there may be a direct road that goes into the park that way, when you come up Exit 206, Jim?
Yeah, so I'm sorry, Mr. Wiliford, I'll take the first part of that and then I'll let him go.
You're coming off like 80,000 and then you come off. And there is not a lot of room between there and Tabbs Creek Road?
But we anticipate, and this was based on preliminary designs when we bought that property, that is not currently a true portion of the park. It's about 20 acres, it's south of the park, off of Tabbs Creek and 158, that was formerly known as a Bar Nine property. And what we anticipated, and based on some engineering analysis we had done at the time, is that there'd be a right-in to that property off of 158 there. So in other words, if you came off the exit ramp off of 85 and turned on 158 headed towards town, you could make a, almost an immediate right into the park. And then that, what we anticipate is that that road would then go up and go along the edge of the park, near the edge of the park property with an appropriate buffer, of course, and intersect with the existing Triangle North Drive that would then allow you to go back out onto Tabbs Creek Road or to turn right and eventually go all the way through back out to 158 over to Vance County.
But that would go behind about six, seven homes there?
There'd be an appropriate buffer there, but it would be, it would be behind those homes with an appropriate buffer.
And then would feed back into the park from that direction?
Right. And it would be, like I said, a right-in. There wouldn't be any traffic going back out onto 158 that way. It'd be a right-in on ingress and not egress, I believe. I'm sorry.
No, that's correct. Thank you. One more question. Thank you. So as you build your first project or building, someone comes to you and they have a second, all of a sudden, it's not speculative anymore. Now they want you to build something for them that can change the plans? Do you decide, yes, we'll build what you want as long as it's in the same agreement that we have?
Yes, that's correct. So that would be, you know, an end user coming in and we would, on the first building, the 265, that's about all you can do there in terms of the ability of that space. So if we had a user that would come in and say, we want to commit to that space, then we would start the second building earlier because that building is now fully committed.
And that's what you hope to achieve.
Oh, yes, that's what, that's how we develop.
Right, right.
Yeah.
How'd you get Charleston, the Valverde? I've been down in there, and that's very nice.
Oh, you liked it? Oh, good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Mr. Jay?
Jim, I know you said you're coming off of 85 going into the park. We're coming off 158. I mean, come off 158 going into the park.
Right.
How are we coming out of the park? We're not going to use Tabbs Creek Lane?
No, the way, so you could, there are two ways to get in, well, I guess there are three ways to get into the into the park currently, well, with that road there. So if that, if that road that we're talking about is built off of 158, that'd be a right-in to go through that former Bar Nine property into the park. Or you could continue down to Tabbs Creek and turn on Tabbs Creek and then make a right on Triangle North Drive. on Triangle North Drive. Or obviously, you could come from the opposite direction on Tabs Creek Road and turn left into, into the park. Eventually, that road will be pushed all the way through over to Vance County. It'll come under the 85, I believe it goes under the 85 overpass, but anyway, it goes over and comes out in Vance County eventually, but that's not constructed yet. So, but those will be the ways in and out of the, in and out of the property.
And you do think that that 158, 206 will actually come to fruition? That's just not to make us feel good?
The right-in?
Yes.
That's what we were told by the engineering company who did the analysis. Portman hadn't done any work on this at all. They don't, they don't have an interest, they don't have an economic interest in that bar nine property. That would be left for us to make sure that access was preserved.
So that would be up to us?
That would be up to us in future development.
We own that.
We own that property through Carter Regional Economic Development Corporation.
Okay. He said, it's 18 months after everything is signed up and everything, missing everything, it's 18 months for to get that first spec building up, right?
Let me, let me grab my notes on that. It's 18 months from, you know...
27 and 30.
Yeah, I think it's 18 months from, from closing. That's correct, 18 months from closing.
That's the first building?
Right.
And 27 months for the second building, right?
No, it's total, it's a total of 27 months, we're counting 27 months from now for, for the first building. So that would include the due diligence time and the time to get the governmental approvals up until closing. And then it would be, once they finish the first building, they have three months after that to get the, before they can start marketing anything other than manufacturing, life sciences, et cetera. So we're talking about a 27-month period between closing and three months after the statutory occupancy. So they would finish that building roughly 24 months from, from closing, from now. Sorry. They'd finish that building roughly 24 months from now, if we sign this agreement tomorrow, correct?
We got 24 months.
24 months for them to do their due diligence and finish construction of the building. And then the second building would, would be, they would begin that 12 months after completion of the first would be their deadline for beginning construction on that second building. They could do it sooner, of course.
Okay. Changing the name of the park to Triangle North Research Park, and I think that's great. That doesn't jeopardize any of the agreements with Carter or any of the others?
We'll need to take that back to the Carter Board, but I don't think they'll be upset about it.
Okay.
We would still keep the Triangle North name, and I think they'll be pleased to see the forward progress.
And so this park is going to be part of the Triangle North Research Park?
It will continue to be part, it is part, a part of that now, and will continue to be part of that.
Okay.
Nothing about this takes it out of that. It furthers the strategy that, like I said, was developed a little over 20 years ago.
Mr. Chairman, I have just one question. Attorney Ren, what is the status of the utilities on the park? And what does this agreement impact that? How does this agreement impact the utilities?
So utilities to the park are partially completed. As you all will recall, this park was bought out of bankruptcy. A previous developer had begun development of the park. And so there, there water, there's water partially into the park. There was a sewer pump station that was constructed with a grant from the General Assembly that has been basically mothballed for many years. And so water and sewer, the county is, with part of the ARPA funding that was received, set aside funding to complete the water and sewer improvements related to the, related to the park. And we're moving, moving forward with that currently. The water system improvements are basically designed, and we're getting close to being able to put those out for bid. The sewer pump station, we've recently gotten a scope of, a scope of work that you all, I believe, approved at the last board meeting for bringing that pump station back up to standards. And so that work will be done, where we will have met our requirements for getting water and sewer utilities to the property line. And then the agreement also requires that we work with utility providers, such as gas and electricity, to extend service to the site. But that would be just us coordinating the extension of that service to make sure that the infrastructure is there to serve the park and the project.
Thank you.
And Scott Phillips, you still here? Okay. Sorry. Did I say all of that accurately? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ren, I have a question for you. So with this, I mean, it's sounding awesome to me, but because of that, why are we giving an incentive to them for doing this?
So the reason that, and that was part of the negotiations, as Mr. Gaskin again reminded me a couple of times, took a great deal of time, it felt like at times, but we were, again, keenly focused on making sure this wasn't just a distribution part. And that was, I think, a fear of the local group here is we didn't want it to just be warehousing and distribution. And developer takes a risk if they can't sell the property to anyone who comes and wants to use it for a legitimate use. And so, of course, Portman is a developer, doesn't want to sit on that product. And to offset them agreeing to restrict the property to biotech, manufacturing, and other things that we think will generate more tax revenue and better paying jobs, we negotiated to provide a site, a clearing and grading and site preparation incentive to offset their costs, to encourage them to, to restrict the property for that type of use. So in exchange for that, we got that 27-month exclusive marketing period for biotech, advanced manufacturing, et cetera. And we got a provision in there, there'll be no last mile distribution from that site unless all the parties agree to it. So you won't see something like an Amazon fulfillment center with lots of trucks, small trucks coming and going. This will be, again, focused on the type of things that we, we hope will bring substantial, not just real estate investment, but personal property investment to the park, and will bring high-paying jobs, not just, not just jobs, but high-paying jobs.
Thank you.
Can I ask another question?
Sure you can.
So...
Any as you want.
We had the water agreement. I wasn't on the board at that time, but we do have 1.25 million gallons of water.
And I told you slightly wrong on that. We've actually got an agreement for 1.2 million gallons and an option for an additional 300,000. So we have an agreement to get up to 1.5 million gallons per day of water. And I have to go back and read all the fine details of that, but I believe once Oxford got the additional capacity from Carlake Regional Water System, we went up to the 1.5 million gallons a day. So I think it's...
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah. I think it's fair to say we got 1.5 million gallons a day of capacity for that part dedicated.
And that is ours. That's nothing that can be done to change that.
We've purchased it. That's right.
Okay. Right. Can we purchase more if they need it?
We would have to talk to Oxford, and they would have to talk to their regional partners about that. But I feel certain that there's a whole lot of water in Carlake, and if we have good jobs and good economic development, we can figure out a way to get it.
I think I'm done.
Commissioner Karen?
I'll make something up. I know it's just the other day, 20 months ago, I think on my calendar, it was March 9th, we met out there at the park in '22. So 20 months from that point, the water and sewer was negotiated back in '17 for this project, and I'm glad to see that y'all are sticking with it and have done such a good job of putting this together. And I will mention as well that on the map that's up on the screen right now, on the northern portion of it, where there's a few dots, that's going to be where the advanced manufacturing VGCC, Advanced Manufacturing Center is going to be. So I think this is going to be asset-driven project for the, for the county. And I'm just excited, you know, it's the long haul, so to speak. But I guess when you're on the board like this, you don't count things in days or months, you count them in years. So I appreciate y'all, the diligence and that you put in on this project. Looking forward to seeing this come to fruition. Glad to see that it's not going to be, at this point in time, being marketed as anything that's hazardous industry or anything like that. So excited about that.
Thank you. All right. We've got a few questions, Mr. Ren, and Mr. Hadley, and Mr. Gaskin. Mr. Gaskins, what's your total investment in the initial phase?
The, for phase one, which is the two buildings, all the grading, all the utility work, and all the vertical development, will be roughly between $110 and $115 million investment. That's just our investment, not counting what the tenants might put inside the buildings.
Okay. Mr. Ren, of the $1.1 million that the county is, for incentive, what is the rate of return on that? How soon can we hope to have that return?
Well, that's a bit of a complicated question, because we have to calculate it currently under existing tax rates, which we expect, as you all have heard due to the revaluation, the property valuations in general will go up and tax rate will likely come down. But under current valuations between, and what I've done is I've built the schedule that's based on anticipated investment. So the first, first year, which would be 2025, I've got a partial investment in the first building, then I've got the building being completed and listed for tax purposes in 2026. And then the second building, being partially constructed in 2028, and completion of the second building in 2029. And these are, again, projections based on what we've talked about. So between 2025 and 2034, under the current tax rate, you'd recover $6,405,100 just on the real estate investment on ad valorem taxes. If you went down and went to a lower tax rate, let's just say it fell to 60 cents on the 100 instead of, instead of 84.5, you would recover $4,548,000 over that, that time period. And again, that's just on the real property. So I can't obviously tell you exactly what it will be, but I can tell you that between the taxes that you'll get back from the real estate investment and the inevitable additional investment in personal property, that you'll, it'll be a good return on your investment. And again, the tax revenues from that park get shared equally with other counties that are part of the Triangle North. But your tax, your incentive payment will be paid back first before it gets split four ways. There is a 20% amount that goes to Triangle North to overhead and other, other work. But generally, you'll get back 80% of those tax revenues to pay back that incentive until you're paid back in full before anything's split out and goes to the other part.
Significant return on 1.1.
Significant return, even at the minimal calculations, a significant return.
Mr. Hadley, I was looking at doing the comparisons, and I think it's important that we, we understand that 30, you, your company estimated 35,000 acres as being a fair market value. And then you looked at, I was reading your, your comments regarding Sanford, and, and also some other industrial parks based upon their ability of water. So can you kind of, just kind of identify that for our board, that pricing in relationship to water capacity?
Well, Sanford has seen a lot of growth, and one of the reasons that they've seen growth in demand that they've seen is because they have tremendous amount of water capacity and that tremendous, tremendous amount of sewer capacity. Sanford has provided sewer to the Moncrief Mega Site. They have run a sewer line out past their airport, which part of the comps were affected by that. $35,000 an acre, basically raw land with sewer, but no real water capacity. That price was paid because of that sewer being run out and then right across the deep in the Old River tomorrow.
I mean, no offense by the question I'm going to ask now, so please don't take it as such.
Okay.
But you have no, what is your relationship with, with the Portman company?
I have no relationship with them, other than the fact I am marketing this park here for Carter. And, you know, to their credit, I think they recognize people are starting to branch out around the triangle. Nobody's come up 85 and said they want to plant a flag up here, and they recognize that they're, they want to do it.
Thank you. I just, just want to make sure that clear that that's, that's a separation there and that's an independent analysis.
Right. They have their own broker, which they've announced with Al Williams, who's with JLL.
Are there board members, do you have any other questions you'd like to ask Mr. Ren or any of the folks here that might have further comments on this?
I've got, I've got just one comment. Since you asked Mr. Hadley that question, I just would say that he's another one who's recognized the, the potential of this region. He's been working with Carter for about seven years. He's sat through many years of either no sales or minimal sales, and has had, had faith in this region and continued to come up here up until this point. I imagine he hadn't gotten enough, hardly to cover a Happy Meal out of it. So he's beginning to see a payoff from this as well.
No, I just thank you. Board, do you have any questions to ask any of Mr. Gaskin's staff?
I'm going to have another one. Should I say what I was doing? I'm sorry. So the 35,000 is the current price. As y'all decide to buy more of that property, the prices escalate? How does that work, Jim?
There's nothing in any of these agreements that prevent the price from adjusting subject to fair market value.
Okay.
Their, their rights are right of first refusal.
Right.
If we get an offer from someone else.
And we can determine that price for Carter at that time?
We can determine that price at a later date.
I think it's important to say the market's going to determine the price. That'd be great.
County manager, your input.
Back to Commissioner Gooch's question, I'll agree with Attorney Ren that I think this is a good deal in the interest of the county. And I want to just quickly thank a few people. I want to thank Mr. Gaskin and Portman for bringing their team and, and for persisting through this long negotiation. I want to thank Jim Ren for helping consistently and persistently reflecting the county's interests throughout those negotiations. Audrey, who's been single-handedly holding up our Economic Development Office, also more than pulling her weight. And there's also somebody not here tonight who was a big believer in this deal. Harry Mills, our former Economic Development Director, believed very strongly in this deal. And I texted with him a little bit today, and he said he had put his time in the evening county commissioner meetings and would not be attending, but he was happy to hear that this deal was close to going through. So I want to thank him as well. This has taken a lot of helping hands to kind of get this question and this proposal to this point. I'm excited that it's here. I sense that commissioners are also excited about that. But it was not without significant effort that we have gotten here tonight to this point.
Based upon the information received, now I'm opening it up, the public hearing up to the public, if there's anyone from the public that would like to make any comments. It is now open to you. Answer, if you give your name and address.
I certainly can. Brad Oldenburg, 6588 Huntsboro Road, Oxford. First of all, for someone who's worked in the life sciences industry for over 15 years, and because of that work with customers that attracted me to North Carolina, I'm very excited to see that a good portion of this business may be in the life sciences area, bringing it up north. That's a really good thing. And I also think, having worked in the industry that long, I think some of those salary estimates might be a little conservative. So I think it's going to be a real positive thing for the county and the area. My question to the board, and you can pose to the commission, if you will, is in addition to the 1.1 million in the infrastructure investment that the county's making, do we anticipate any other tax incentives, either for the development or for the businesses that will be coming in, hopefully that will be attracted here? Any other tax incentives that we might anticipate going forward?
I'll, I'll take that as your comment, and I will, I will have that, when you finish making your comments, I'll rephrase that for the, for the folks to answer. I think that's a fair question.
Thanks very much. Great job, everybody. I really...
Mr. Ren, or anyone else is interested in responding to that? Any other future investments or incentives required for this, for this phase?
That would be a policy matter for the board, but, well, for this phase, no. But, but as a policy matter for the board, if we had a, an industry located there, let's say we had a biotech man... say we had a biotech manufacturing firm, want to locate in one of the, the buildings to do an outfit and move their equipment in and that sort of thing, then I would certainly hope the board would consider an additional incentive at that time.
So, any other? Yes, ma'am, please.
If I may just add to that, speaking specifically to the end users, I have presented before you on grants and incentives that have been passed through the county, through the Department of Commerce Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina. So, this agreement would not exclude any of the end users from still receiving grants and incentives from the state, in which case there would be, if an award was, if an incentive was awarded to that end user, that there would be a county match or local match required to be considered by the board. But again, all of that would be brought before the board. It would be on a case-by-case basis, based on the end user.
And there's a certain, and there's a certain percentage there as well.
Yes.
Yeah, just, so. Right. With that being said, is there any more questions from the, from the public? Any more? I apologize. Yes, ma'am.
I'm just curious whether or not there's been any consideration of potential impact, particularly on county law enforcement in terms of patrol and security stretch, since that's already an area that appears to be rather stretched.
Yes, Mr. Wren. Thank you, ma'am. When we negotiated the, the agreement with the city of Oxford for water, it also included a fire protection district. So, the agreement we have with the city of Oxford's Triangle North, Granville Water, Sewer and Fire Protection Agreement, so there would be, from anything that locates in this park, 15 cents per $100 valuation to go towards fire protection of the city of Oxford. As far as security in the park, we would, the sheriff's department would, would provide primary security addresses outside of the corporate limits, and we would also expect that a lot of the types of facilities that might locate here would have their own security and, and that type thing. From what we typically gather with these situations is that fire protection's a big issue. Security is always important, but they, they do rely on internal security and, or their own security often.
We do know, ma'am, currently that the sheriff's office has 72 law enforcement of that. They have not met their full quota of hiring of certified law enforcement officers. They have a number, but as, like most law enforcement agencies throughout the country, that is a challenge to get to fill all the open positions. I think Durham is like down 150 positions. And so, I think our sheriff's office currently is operating at a much better rate than that in regards to filling such positions. The sheriff can always come to the county and make additional requests based on, but what we're looking for is metrics, data, to demonstrate that, 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 that is a need to add more positions to, to meet the demand, the public safety demand. So, and it appears as if, based on what I've heard speak tonight, that there is a period of time in which we can prepare for such activity, along with mutual aid agreements that can coincide between the county and the city of Oxford, that, that can assist with that. So, it's, it's a, it's a good question to ask. I'm personally more concerned from a public safety perspective, from a fire protection perspective, and I'm glad to hear that Mr. Wren has included that. And county manager?
I would add, I was thinking some of the same thoughts that the county attorney raised. I would also point out that typical rule of thumb is that residential development uses more services than it pays for in taxes, and that commercial and industrial development uses far less. On average, about 33 cents of public services for every dollar that they pay in to property tax coffers. And so, kind of continued commercial and industrial development is an important balance to residential development, and so in general, it's true. I think that the law enforcement needs there are likely to be lighter than lots of other kinds of development. They would have more of their own security provided for, and that in general, another way of saying what I just said, is that they will be helping to subsidize law enforcement across the rest of the county because of the principle that I just described.
And, and as you rightly pointed out, all over the country, hiring officers is really the question, because there simply are fewer and fewer people interested in going into law enforcement. So, so the question isn't so much a financial one necessarily, it's more a question of as the responsibility for security goes up, and we simply don't have the officers, even though the vacant positions are funded. What, how does that impact of a business to the county and the residential?
I think, appreciate you being here tonight, and that's a valid point, and we could talk for a long time about the pay and benefit adjustments that the county approved in the current year fiscal budget, and I'd be happy to talk more with you about that. We hope that that is having a significant positive effect on our ability to recruit and retain law enforcement. Still kind of a work in progress, but it is a rapidly changing environment, and we're trying to stay on top of that.
And I'm sure companies of this nature, once occupied, based on my experience working in corporate America and corporate security, they can in fact employ measures of security to include private police, to take on such activities that are actually certified law enforcement officers working on behalf of, of companies. So, so there's, there's other means that it can be done.
There's nothing in there.
That, that take, that take on, right, but they can take that on as individual companies once the tenant becomes available. So, any other questions? Okay, board, I want to ask you, listen up here, and we're going to run through a couple things. There were two public hearings, and I'll, that would be, make a motion to, I'll end the public hearing, and then I'm going to make some recommendations. First recommendation I'd like for us to take a vote on is follows. Request approval, the economic development intern director, request approval of the contract for the purchase of real property to Portman Industrial LLC, and that the county manager and county attorney be authorized to finalize an economic development agreement with the company, with the county manager to execute the agreement. Is that understood, board? With that being said, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, you do need to make one finding or two findings with that. Before such an interest may be conveyed, the county or city governing bodies shall determine the probable average hourly wage to be paid, paid to workers by the business to be located at the property and the fair market value of the interest, subject to whatever covenants, conditions and restrictions the county or city proposes to subject it to. I think you've easily heard the information to make the determination about the property value. And so, based on the information, it's your job to determine the value, but based on information that we've heard, it seems to me that $35,000 is a reasonable value. I think you've seen the, the range of probable hourly wages presented as a range, because we don't know exactly, and, and that's reviewed that, based on information from the school of government and others, that that seems to be a reasonable way to do it. So, if that slide can be put back up, that shows the range, I think you all could refer to that and come to a, a decision about the probable.
So, there are two, two additional items. One is wage and the other?
The value.
Value of the land?
Of the, of the property. So, and again, based on the information presented, I think the board could reasonably conclude that the value of the property is $35,000 per acre, and that the range of, the probable range of average hourly wages, depending on what type of business locates in the property, is from $56,514 to $117,842, but that would have to be converted to an hourly basis.
Okay. Based on the motion that we just made in first and second, I'll ask that it be amended to include the wage information, that the board is in agreement with it, and the property value, and that the board is in agreement with what has been presented to the board as the range of wages and the land cost.
Mr. Chairman, I will amend my motion to include the wage range that we presented and the land price.
And I second.
For acre.
And I second with that change, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion that was made? Address.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Next item. Mr. Wren, in this next item, is there any additional items that need to be added to, to this request?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So, the next item for the second item within the public hearing. The economic developer intern approval of the 1.1 million incentive package, and the county manager and county attorney be authorized to negotiate a grant contract with the company, which will be, be brought back to the board for approval at a later meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Simmons, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Both motions carries 7-0. Thank you very much. I want to thank you gentlemen and the board. I want to take this opportunity for you to provide the opportunity. This is, I believe, a very momentous occasion for our county, and I want to thank everyone that was involved and the hard work that was put together to get this done. And thank you so much to those with Portman and Mr. Hadley for being here tonight, and for Audrey for your hard, hard work, Mr. Wren for your hard, hard work, and county manager as well. Any other further comments on this before we move on to the next item?
Yes, sir. Before you move on to the next item, can we have a bio break, please?
Yes. I just want to make sure before we close this item that, yes, I will. Any commissioner have anything else they'd like to say to any of the attendees that were here regarding this? Granville looks forward to doing business with you and, and for greater things for greater Granville, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for.
At this time, any other motion? We go into recess?
So, move.
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
10 minutes.
Okay.
Deborah?
Take that motion.
Second by Mr., I believe that was Mr. Kozart. Okay, we're now back in session, so we're back on to page 127, item 14. Mr. Phillips. Thank you. Thank you for waiting patiently.
No problem. Chairman May, Granville County Commissioners. This request is considerable in the fixed price service contract needed for the design of the Granville County Extension's teaching kitchen. It's located at 125 Oxford Lute Road, Oxford. Granville County Extension Service has been without a teaching kitchen since relocating from the Wall Street facility. This project has been discussed and planned for several years, but has been delayed due to budget constraints and an understanding of the facility's leasing terms with the state. Recent conversations we've had have confirmed a long-range extension to our lease, making the investment in the property modifications more practical. Stephen Baxter, architect, was retained in 2019 to do the initial planning and baseline design of the needed improvements. This request continues their work in preparation for the project approval submittal through the Office of State Construction. This project has been budgeted for this fiscal year. However, we'll, we'll need to assess any additional design requirements by the state, as well as the timeline for the approval process before moving forward with the bidding process. This request complies with Section 5 Architectural Engineering and Surveying Services, which is General Statute 143, and the exemptions. It's my recommendation, and this, like I said, this, the fiscal year funding can accommodate this request, and it's my recommendations for the county to exempt itself from North Carolina General Statute 143, 64.31, by utilizing the exemptions, professional fees of less than $50,000, along with the designer's familiarity with the project, and award the price, the engineering service contractor, Stephen Baxter, architect, for a price not to exceed $17,400 unless authorized by an approved change order.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any questions for Mr. Phillips? I have a question for the county manager, county attorney, but just from the board. Is this all good with the, the exemption requested?
The exemption request is an exemption from the Mini Brooks Act, which requires that architectural services be only procured based on a qualifications basis, except if it's under $50,000, you can exempt it, and on a job like this, it gets very expensive to go out and try to do qualifications-based procurement, and so I think it's, seems like a reasonable way to handle this.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Phillips. I know you've used that before, and just wanted to make sure the board was.
And also another exemption is the architects or engineer, the professionals familiarity with the work, so he's already done the baseline design.
Based on, yes, county manager?
Commissioners have already heard this, but just for the, for the public and just to reiterate, that we had put these upgrades on hold, pending some conversations with the state about extending the lease for this building. That, that agreement is still working its way through the, the state decision-making process, but they have agreed in principle to a 20-year lease extension through 2047, and so, which is really a timeframe within which it makes sense for us to make these additional investments. So, we feel much better about, about the wisdom of making these improvements to that building, given that extension.
Any other questions or concerns from the board? What's the pleasure of the board?
For approval.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kiran with the first, and Commissioner Kozart, I believe, with the second. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Mr. Phillips, I promise you, next meeting, that I'm going to move you to the front of the pack. That you have diligently been a.
That's all good. That's all good.
The bad's made here for a couple of long meetings, so.
It's just good to hear everything that's going on, so.
Yep. So, go ahead, county manager.
Mr. Chair, we have two tax matters coming up, and at the request of our tax administrator, I'd, I'd like to request that we switch the order of those two items.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yes, sir. Can, let me look at my agenda. She want the 2024 revaluation public update first?
That's correct.
Okay, Mrs. Griffin, please. That would be, ladies and gentlemen, on page 138.
Okay. All right, so I just wanted to update the public on our reevaluation. Come on, man. There it goes. So, a recap on October 16th, we are predicting a large increase. Some of the properties will have a significant increase in value, while others may be a more moderate increase with the revenue neutral tax rate. Most taxpayers will see an increase in, on their bill, and a few may actually see a And we also published in the Oxford Ledger and Button of Creedmore News, and instead of using, doing the mandated one publication, we, we did multiple.
Probably so.
Maybe it's the operator. It's not this. Okay, so just talk about the schedule of values a little bit. The schedule of values contain all base rates to be applied against property and/or property characteristics. It takes into consideration like location, the year built. It takes into consideration like location, the year built, type of construction. Dwelling classes range from, say, mansions and A to E-grade homes. A dwelling value would depend on the class of heated and non-heated square feet, number of bathrooms. So with that being said, as far as the ranges, it also includes any type of adjustment that would be used for various types of construction or market conditions. And why must we have a reevaluation? Because the North Carolina General Statute says so. It helps to reestablish fairness in the tax burden by realigning the tax values. Okay, so property values, as they change, is not practical to try and match values with the continuous fluctuations. Some of these values, well, most of them will increase, a few will decrease and some will remain moderate. So the reevaluation is a process of resetting the tax values to a specific point in time. Once these tax values are set, they will not be changed again until the next reevaluation.
Which, can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
You sure can.
I know we were on an eight-year now. When you say until the next, well, this is six.
We're six now, yeah.
So we will change to six. Is that correct?
We already did.
Yeah, we already changed to six. All right, so I included some examples of sales after our 2018 reevaluation. Sorry. Okay, so this property here, it's in the Dutchville Township. Right now, our 2018 values is valued at one hundred and thirty-eight, one hundred and thirty-eight, two forty-eight. So this property, excuse me, so this property, it was built in 2015. It is a, excuse me, this property was built in nineteen ninety-five. It is a C-plus-five grade home with one thousand three hundred and eighteen heated square feet with a total square feet of one thousand four hundred and seventy-five. There were no changes on this property, no upgrades at least that were permitted. And as you can see, in November, that same property sold for a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, turned around again in 2022 and sold for two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
So to translate on that, I think you probably picked up on this, from the last revale to now, or actually even just to 2022, we saw just under a hundred percent increase in the value of that house.
Okay. This house is in the Brassville Township. We have a tax value of three hundred thirty-seven thousand seven eighteen. This home was built in 2015. It is a B-plus-ten grade home with two thousand three hundred ninety-three heated square feet and a total of three thousand six hundred twenty square feet. And this property sold in July of 2018 for three eighteen. It sold in 2023 for five hundred and fifty thousand.
This is basically two hundred square feet, so five hundred.
Yes.
Two hundred dollars per foot and four and eighty thousand. What does that make it about two hundred and twenty-five dollars per foot?
That sounds about right, two hundred. Yeah, that sounds about right. This is a B.
The other one was basically thirteen, so.
Right. Mm-hmm. Two hundred and thirty square foot. Okay. And. Okay, this property is in Oak Hill. The tax value is thirty-nine thousand three oh seven. This house was built in nineteen seventy-nine. It is a D-plus-five grade home. There is one thousand one hundred and fifty-two heated square feet, a total of one thousand three hundred and eighty-two square feet. As you can see here, in October of 2018, it sold for twenty-four thousand and it sold again in February of 2019 for a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. No upgrades.
So it wasn't, so this one wasn't a flipper that somebody bought it and spent a few dollars and?
It was a qualified sale. So what a qualified sale is, is arms-length transaction, so that wasn't in any type of foreclosure, that wasn't some.
Did they remodel the home?
No.
If there was anything done, it would have been on the inside, something we, you know, we don't assess inside out. We.
The brooms come with it, huh?
Yeah. Okay. This property is in Fish and Creek. We have the tax value at two hundred eighty-three thousand four forty-six. This property sold February of 2018 for three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. This home was built in 2017. It is a B-minus-ten grade. It is two thousand six hundred seventy-two heated square feet, a total of three thousand five hundred and thirty-one square feet. Now, the only thing that was added to this property was a pole barn in 2019. A pole barn. So it sold in eighteen, right after our revaluation that took place in January of eighteen, for three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. It sold in March of 2020 for three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and then sold again in February of 23 for five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Okay, this property is in Sassafras Fork. The home was built in.
Have you seen one that's been kind of flat?
Nineteen, nineteen seventy-four. So we have the tax value at one hundred forty-three thousand three forty-nine. It is a B-minus-five grade home, two thousand two hundred and fifty-eight heated square feet and two thousand nine hundred and fifty-three total square feet. The property sold in May of twenty-one for two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Sold again in December for two hundred and forty thousand. Okay, so what if the real estate market changes? Sales studies will be conducted until December thirty-first of this year, so if there are any type of changes, we would put like a market condition in the schedule of values, well, not in the schedule, that works in the CAMA system, right? The neighborhood factor, excuse me.
The schedule of values was the public hearing we had earlier with the grade A through E?
Yeah.
And then the plus or minuses that you're talking about and that was a big thick book that we held up earlier, so folks can go online and see that, right?
Yes, people can go online and see that.
Ms. Jen.
Yes.
How much difference are you seeing if somebody's got four acres with a house? Is the land change values? Is that making a big difference?
The land? The land is changing, yes, it's been a big difference. I think most of it will be the houses. This is Chase Pearson with Pearson's Appraisal Service. What do you see anymore?
I would say the majority is there's been a huge increase in the replacement cost of a building. So in 2018, it was significantly cheaper to buy all the inputs to build a house than it is today. And those inputs aren't just the bricks, the concrete blocks, the siding, right? It's also the labor. So you had a combination of labor shortages, material shortages, that's resulting in really high replacement costs of these houses. So if you were to build a new house, it's quite expensive, so that pushes people to houses that are older, right? And everyone's been doing that and that's driving those prices up. Additionally, during COVID, you know, 2020, 2021 kind of timeframe, interest rates were extremely low and the government, the Federal Reserve lowered those interest rates which drove up demand. There were more bidders for the same number of houses. People were staying at home more, so everyone wanted to renovate their homes at once, get a new home. So you had sort of a shortage of supply of labor and an increase in demand and people's financing abilities to get homes.
But going back to my question, that four-acre lot versus, I mean, you're seeing the value of the land increase, maybe not as much on the percentage?
Yes, sir.
But that is also increasing?
It's also increasing generally. It's kind of more location dependent than the house. I would say it's more the building than the land in general, but it is kind of area-specific. But yes, sir.
Is that regional or is that across the board? In other words, are you seeing that in proportion across the United States or?
Yes, our company works in Virginia and North Carolina and we're seeing it in every county we work in, Western Carolina, Virginia, you pretty much name it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, Ms. Griffin, in the event, let me let you finish your presentation, I apologize.
I just have a list up here of important dates. So November twentieth is the date that we'll get together and approve the schedule, adopt the schedule of values. And November twenty-third, thirtieth, December seventh and fourteenth, the tax office will advertise the adoption of the schedule of values because we'll advertise it and the public will be able to appeal to the State Board of Appeals. December twenty-first will be the last day that the public will be able to appeal to the State Property Tax Commission. And? There we go, question.
In the event, in the event that we have, well, I've said before, I just want to make sure I'm correct. In the event we were to have national calamity and all of a sudden prices plummet, what is our course of action?
Well, like you stated, the neighborhoods in our taxing system, it would be a adjustment in each neighborhood to compensate for the market value.
But if we had, go ahead, you follow.
I think there are two corrective mechanisms. One is built into the advertising and resetting, advertising of the revenue neutral tax rate and the resetting of the tax rate with the new values, right? In that new scenario, most county property owners will be paying something not too far off from their current property tax bill, right? I mean, if their property is appreciated a lot more or a lot less than the average, it may differ somewhat, right? But it's not the case that if your property has doubled in value, your tax bill will be twice as high. So property values can do whatever they want, right? Kind of post-January one, 2024, but really the property taxation of Granville County won't have gotten any more or less bearable than it is right now. The second corrective mechanism is the one that forced us to hurry up our revale, right? From eight years to bring that down to six years. So the state continues to monitor the sales ratio in every county and if you get above or below a certain point that is far enough away from a one-to-one ratio, they will request that you adjust your revale schedule to get, to get things back into whack. But I think that, again, what that might, that might cause us, right? If property values dropped, we might have to do that, but again, I don't actually think, so values might be more accurate. We would reset the tax rate again and even then, the county would still have to be bringing in enough revenue to run county operations and the bill that a given owner might pay might still be about the same as it is now. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Adapt to the situation. Okay, this was for information only, am I correct?
Informational, yes.
And will the public have access to that PowerPoint? Is that online?
I think I can get Terry to put it online.
Okay, thank you. Are you prepared to move on to the next topic, ma'am?
Yes.
And that is on page, gentlemen and ladies, on line thirty-two, that would be the specialist copper products.
Yes, so with our tax values and it being a reevaluation year, it might be a good idea, well, I think it will be a good idea, to enter a contract with specialists for their copper products. They have Copper Pro. Copper Pro is a, it's a comparable sales selector, so it helps with validating sales, assessment information on current sales. But they also have copper citizens and this is something that we really wanted, that way we can have access online for the taxpayers. If, you know, once they receive their notice in January, they can go on our site, go on to the Copper Pro, put their address in and it will pull up comparable sales in their neighborhood, in their area. If it's not exactly in their neighborhood, it will be comparable to their home and this, we believe, will help determine if that is something they want to appeal, if they actually have, you know, concrete evidence that we do have it, you know, overstated, then it's something that will help the citizens as well.
The board have any questions concerning this recommendation? I'll give you the recommendation, just have a question here. Are you, are you, what are you asking for? You're asking enter the agreement, but is that for the twenty-one thousand dollar amount or the fifteen thousand five ninety amount?
The initial cost is twenty-one thousand nine fifty.
Okay.
And that's for all the licenses and so forth.
And then each year after?
Each year, yeah.
And I think it's really asking to give the authority to the county manager and the county attorney to finalize a contract with this company and execute once, once we've done that.
Based on the county attorney's comments and the county manager, what's the pleasure of the board? Move for approval. Commissioner Karen? Second by? Mr. Z? Any further discussion?
I would just note.
I would just note that the funding for this is already in the budget that we had set aside for the revale process, so that no additional funding is actually required. We're just assigning some of it to this purpose.
I have a question, this after the fact. Well, we had.
Whatever, you can ask, yeah, good.
So is this the figure, 21,000, that program is good for one year, three years? How long?
It's, it's every year. You, we.
So that's a yearly fee?
I'm sorry.
That's a yearly fee?
No, the yearly fee is the $15,000.
$950.
And once you're approved, it upholds, okay. So it's $15,950. And it may be something we revisit later to see if we actually need both, or do we just need it during a reevaluation?
So, and of course, the figure 21,950 is for?
The licenses?
The next 12 months.
Mm-hmm, for 12 months, uh-huh. Okay.
Yes, Z.
I got a question, but not, not that, like, most I need to ask so quick.
It's a motion, yeah. Second.
It's me, second.
Yeah, you seconded.
Still discussion.
There's still discussion, you can ask for quick.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Z.
Uh, Ms. Griffin, when, when is the time for senior citizens to act for this?
Senior citizens should apply January 1. The application period is from January 1 until June the 1st.
Okay.
And along the way, I'll have more presentations, and we'll have that in there as well.
Okay.
Y'all will get tired of me.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to emergency services. Robin? And consider to purchase two message boards with awarded Homeland Security grant funds, grant funds, I'll let you take it from there, ma'am.
All right. Is this good? Can you hear me? It's picking me up. Is that good? All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. The purpose of this item is to consider the purchase of two message boards with awarded Homeland Security grant funds. Granville County Emergency Management has two message boards that are beyond end of life. These message boards were purchased in 2013 with Homeland Security grant funds made available through the Domestic Preparedness Region, also known as DIPR 4. At the November 21st, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting, the board approved application and acceptance of a no-match Domestic Preparedness Region grant, Region Homeland Security Grant Program in the amount of $31,854.56 to purchase two new message boards. We were recently awarded this grant, so this request is for the expenditure of those grant funds for the purchase of the two new message boards. The Emergency Management Director and the Emergency Management Coordinator recommend the purchase of two message boards from K&amp;K Systems with the awarded grant funds not to, not to exceed the amount of $31,854.56. And then you have the three quotes in there.
Any questions, board? Basically, we're going to be having these paid for.
I'll make that motion.
What's in there? Second?
Second.
Z, any discussion?
Quick question. Are we going to be sharing this with the region?
Yes.
Are these ours? Okay, so there's a whole DIPR 4, which is four counties, five counties?
There are 11 counties.
11, okay.
Yeah. But it could be deployed statewide.
Gotcha.
But it will, they will live in Granville County.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, they're housed here.
First access, if there's anything going on, we can say that we need to retain them until, till we know that we no longer need them for that again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, page 169, continuing, continuity of Operations Plan Update Coop.
That's right. This item is to update the Granville County Continuity of Operations Plan, known as the Coop, by requesting the board's approval or resolution of adoption of the updated plan and signing of an updated promulgation statement. On October 2nd, 2017, the Granville County Board of Commissioners adopted the initial Granville County Continuity of Operations Plan and signed a promulgation statement. The purpose of continuity planning is to ensure that the county can continue to operate and provide continued services, known as mission essential functions, during a crisis or disaster. The Coop outlines these mission essential functions, identifies critical facilities, equipment, and records. It also establishes lines of succession, as well as alternate facilities. Since the adoption of the initial plan, there have been updates to county policies and restructuring of county departments. The Coop needed to be updated to reflect these changes. The update began approximately a year ago with participation and input from all department heads, county administration, and the county attorney. One such change was the addition of a deputy county manager, which affects the line of succession of the county manager. Additionally, there's been updated wording incorporated in portions of the plan to reflect current county policies. The Emergency Management Director and the Emergency Management Coordinator recommend that the Granville County Board of Commissioners sign a resolution to adopt the updated Granville County Continuity of Operations Plan, as well as sign the updated promulgation statement.
With the pleasure of the board.
Move that the recommendation comes out, emergency management director, emergency manager coordinator.
Then I'll second that.
Talk about Mr. Williford. I just have, just one discussion point. County manager, you reviewed this. County attorney, your section, we good?
I reviewed a section of it, right.
Yes, right.
Yes.
Okay, very good. You know, further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thanks, thank you for being here tonight, and sorry for the long night. Appointments, I think we're at appointments now, page 272. Here with me one moment, please, I have to discuss something a little first. Make an appointment to the Carrot Car Workforce Development Board for additional private industry. A letter from Lou Grillo, Workforce Director's attached request addition, the addition of private industry member for a one-year term. He is recommending William Betts from District 3 for this position. And then the recommendation, Leo Grillo, Workforce Development Director recommends William Betts to fill an additional private industry position for one-year term. With pleasure, the board.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Mr. Betts for this board.
Mr. Williford? Second motion. Mr. Kozart, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
South Granville Water and Sewer, it's an appointment to reappoint a member of the South Grand Water and Sewer. Granville County has two representatives from Suwassa, the term of Timothy Karen. Granville County expires November 30th, 2023. Suwassa board members are appointed for a term of three years by agencies they represent. Appointments are made so the board is sworn, and at the December Suwassa board meeting of, of the, of the year in which the respective board members' term starts. Other serving is Mr. Gooch. Recommendation is Commissioner Karen, who is eligible for reappointment, be reappointed.
I'll make the motion that Mr., that Commissioner Karen be reappointed.
With pleasure, second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Gooch, you're serving on board, any, any further discussion?
No further discussion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next one, Mr. Karen, if you'll take this from me, please.
The Veteran Services Affairs Committee, District 5, Representative Jim Albright has resigned. Is there a person from District 5?
Yes, this commissioner nominates Corey Brennan, an Army veteran, to, to serve.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second by Mr., first by Mr. May, second by Mr. Williford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I have a late addition to our appointments. We have an open position on the JCPC. We have an applicant that came in today, Ms. Hope Pittman. I believe you spoke with her, and I spoke with her also. She's willing to serve, and I would like to put forth her name to be nominated for the District 7 seat. She's from, she's from District 5, but she'll be serving for District 7 on the JCPC.
She's currently serving in correction capacity for the Department of Correction.
Yeah, she, she works with North Carolina Department of Adap correction.
Very good. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the approval of, am I on track here? Approval of amendment to the interlocal agreement with the city of Creedmore for second resource officer. County manager, retake this, please.
Yep, this has already been described in a general way for commissioners. We have currently an interlocal agreement with the city of Creedmore for the provision of one SRO for South Granville High School. Early this school year, Creedmore folks, Granville County Public School folks, Sheriff's Office and I all met to discuss challenges that we were facing with the provision of SROs in the schools. The sheriff has been doing a lot of hiring and didn't have quite enough trained folks to be SROs in the schools that he was contracted for, and he agreed to transfer some lapsed salary money from his budget for the current year, so that the city of Creedmore, which did have some additional trained folks, could provide an additional SRO with the additional money to the relocated Holly Middle School, which is currently in the former Creedmore Elementary School site. So this is just for this current year that we're in. Creedmore has already, in good faith, been providing that second SRO in that second school, which is, again, kind of in the long run, part of, part of our broader plan for providing the most appropriate SRO from the most appropriate agency to each Granville County Public School.
And, board, for your, further education, the school safety grant money has not been on the budget, it was just approved, so it's not been issued yet, so I'm sure the school system has been directed to pursue that. So based on that recommendation, with the pleasure, board.
Move that we approve the SRO under the conditions that our.
County manager just laid out.
Seven seconds.
I'll second that.
Seven seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Page 297, if you will. UNC School of Government Workplace, Ms. Wykow, please.
This item in your agenda is to consider approval of a service agreement with UNC School of Government's Local Government Workplaces Initiative to conduct a workplace climate survey. The Local Government Workplaces Initiative helps local governments create great workplaces by listening to employees, and they do this through the use of surveys, interviews, focus groups, and HR data analysis. Regular employee surveys are a productive approach to understanding the workforce, fostering a positive work environment, and making data-driven decisions to improve our organization. The Workplace Climate Survey is designed to give employees voice, to provide insight on employee morale and satisfaction with their work environment, including such things as satisfaction with job rewards, supervisory practices, diversity, inclusion, organizational commitment, burnout, and I could go on. Insight gained from this Workplace Climate Survey will help inform areas that county management and department managers need to focus attention on. Not only attention, but our resources to ensure that we're not only attracting the best talent for Granville County, but also we're able to retain them once they get here. This is in line with objective number nine from your strategic plan, which states to develop Granville County government as a preferred employer in the Region K area. So the recommendation tonight, subject to finalization of a suitable agreement, county administration recommends authorizing the county manager to execute an agreement with the Local Government Workplace Initiative to conduct a workplace climate survey in an amount not to exceed $15,000, and that funding is available in the fiscal year 24 training budget.
The recommendation, with the pleasure, the board. Mr.?
Motion to approve.
Second motion. Any discussion or any questions for Ms. Wykow? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
County manager, your report, sir.
No further items for this evening.
Mr. Ren, I believe we're on to you. Resolution adopted consensus principles, part two, for revised Falls Lake rules.
You have in your agenda packet tonight, both the Upper New River Basin Association consensus principles two, to guide revisions to the Falls Lake rules, and also the Granville County Resolution endorsing the Upper New River Basin Association consensus principles two for revised Falls Lake rules. As you all will recall, this was, the Falls Lake rules were adopted, I believe, in 2012 timeframe. At the time, they called for stage one, which set specific reductions for nitrogen and phosphorus in phase one, and then, which I believe is a 20 and 40% reduction, and then in stage two, they set a numeric reduction standard of 40% for phosphorus, for nitrogen, and 77% for phosphorus, and set some of the strictest water quality standards in the country. The Upper New River Basin Association has been working hard over the last 11 years to address the economic and technological feasibility of the rules, and what the consensus principles two does is really endorse an adaptive management approach where we focus not just on numeric reductions, but on levels of investment and effort to try to achieve water quality reductions in the watershed. And so you have the consensus principles two in front of you. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I understand that even though it's on two pages, it's dense and technical. Right, one of the things that we, we did have, Mr. Ren, is we actually had a meeting with Mr. Westhall, County Manager, you and I, to discuss these, and item number nine was one of the items that resulted from that meeting, and I think the easiest way for me, that for me to wrap my arms around it was, is that it is going to assist us in ensuring, or at least monitoring to some degree, what other counties or municipalities may, when impacting, may be doing that may negatively impact the watershed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Which in paragraph nine says that, that we will maintain the annual loading limit specified in the current new development rule, provide more flexible evaluation of need for stormwater nutrient control for individual residential lots, or for the subdivision of large family parcels for purposes of passing land to heirs for building their homes. Allow local governments to consider more innovative approaches to stormwater management, and this is a part Mr. May is focusing on, and include joint consultation among watershed organization members to assess and document consistent application of new development requirements. So the idea there is that we would basically have, through the watershed organization, which would be the Upper New River, Upper New River Basin Association, have a process for basically assuring quality control among the different jurisdictions to make sure there's consistency in how the rules are applied.
Thank you. Any other questions on the board behalf? Any other questions on the board behalf? I think it's just call for a simple adoption, what's the pleasure, board?
Move adoption, Mr. Chair.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. County manager, have any further things to discuss with the board? I mean, I'm sorry, county attorney, you, she already...
I think I've talked enough tonight.
Not tonight?
Yeah, I think I've talked enough, yeah.
Okay, good. Okay. Um, Commissioner Tony Kozart.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, at this time of night, I won't go on elaborating, but, uh, what happened out with, uh, development at that, at our, uh, industrial park is absolutely, uh, exciting. And also, uh, surely, uh, like to bring up at the appropriate time some of the comments made by our students tonight. Highly impressed with their presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Kozart. Commissioner Karen.
Keeping with the brevity, just want to make sure that everyone's aware that we're gonna be meeting here on Wednesday night for our Recreation Master Plan Open House. It starts at five, it's a floating event, five to eight. Five to eight feels right.
Okay. Commissioner Jimmy Gooch.
Uh, due to the hour, I think I'm gonna pass on any comments tonight.
Okay. Mr. Zalodius J.
Uh, just two things I would like to take you, uh, we had, since our last meeting, I was in our district, uh, district meeting, and we was talking about changes. And the changes where we used to have, but we have regional meeting for our goal, we're not gonna have it this year. Each district will have to have their own meeting, discuss, uh, three goals, and three things that is, that, uh, affecting the county, uh, y'all see is affecting the county. Uh, I hope to try to have it, uh, have it, our district meeting, because Vance Franklin, Warren, and Preston, and Grandma, I hope that can happen yet, uh, sometime last of January, uh, sometime in February.
Thank you, sir.
And also, just like last, uh, last Friday, uh, Grandma Kelly, uh, District Vance, Vance, Grandma Vance, District F Department received a Thrive, uh, grant that was presented, nine, uh, nine of the, uh, nation, uh, Grandma County received that grant. And we had, uh, uh, US Secretary, uh, what's his name? Hey, thank you, name? Bessera? Bessera? And, uh, Ju, uh, Lieutenant Governor Josh Fire, all viewed our F Department, and they were very impressed about our F Department. Uh, so, like I said, thank you for everything.
Thank you, Mr. J. Commissioner Rob Williford?
Um, also keeping it brief, I was invited by, uh, Ki, um, Senator Sossman, but he's not a representative, thank you. Um, last week, we had, they presented the Henderson Oxford, um, um, board check for five hundred thousand dollars. Senator Barnes, Lisa Barnes, was also in, in several folks from, um, Henderson, Vance County, Granville County. Um, that money will be used to run the water to the airport, and I didn't realize the importance of it, I do now, for them to have a hangar over a hundred, uh, of, of a hundred thousand square feet, it has to have a sprinkler system. So just as this announcement came tonight, that could fall right into, uh, to work with it well, and I'm very excited about what we did tonight. I think it's been a long time coming. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Mr. Williford, Commissioner Sue Himmend.
Um, I'm gonna go ahead and pass for them tonight.
Okay, just a couple things. One, thank you very much for all the hard work by all the county staff in regards to, uh, the Portman matter. Thank you very much. Um, Drew, I'm just gonna ask again about carts. I just wanna get that other person involved and, uh, see if we can get those services and some movement down south.
Yep, we, we've had some further back and forth. She's sending out a scheduling email, so we should be meeting before too long.
We had a school liaison, uh, meeting, it was very productive. Um, Drew was able to, uh, county manager was able to negotiate how, uh, the, the school system would be able to, um, obtain some white buses, which are our, our obligation, uh, and that was successfully done, so they can get some additional, uh, white buses, uh, bring that up to speed. We're also making plans to have a joint meeting with the school board, hopefully in December, we can sit down, discuss our goals and objectives and budgeting and so forth. Uh, and then, uh, the Chris Tech Superfund, uh, was taken care of, uh, and so they're cleaning up Chris Tech. It's a significant, um, in a very, uh, toxic location, and that's gonna be, uh, over the course of the next couple of years, I believe, to get that completely, uh, re, revitalized and mitigate it, so it's very good. Uh, other than that, I don't have anything else, board. What is the pleasure of the board in regards to enjoyment?
I'm ready.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second.
Nice.